Board of Commissioners with us this evening and we're here to have this joint meeting and going to talk about some transportation issues up in Terrebonne to start the meeting. Before we get rolling on that, it's good to see we have some audience members this evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak to any topics that are not on the agenda? Okay, moving on to item 2.5, Nicole Mardell said she'd like to have a few moments.
It's not on my agenda.
They get a .5 when it's not on the agenda.
You should try that.
So for the record, Nicole Mardell, Associate Planner, so I'm just here tonight to present to the Planning Commission some materials for your July 25th work session. So we'll be discussing some religious institution text and comprehensive plan amendments and we'll also be discussing three separate sets of floodplain amendments. The materials are a bit voluminous, so we wanted to give you an extra week to review them. I'm here to formally present them into the record in case members of the public also want to view them. We have a floodplain website that's accessible for all. All the materials are there. One of the exhibits for the floodplain amendments that occurs in two of the three amendments are previous hearings officer and staff decisions. The text is about 390 pages long. We printed all of the other materials in a binder for each of you. We only have one communal binder at this time of the decisions. If you'd like your own binder of the 390-page document, let me know. I can print one for you, but it is also available online. So that's all for me.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
And we can pick those notebooks up at the conclusion of our meeting?
Yes.
Thank you for getting it presented to us. Moving on to item number three, joint work session with the Board of County Commissioners, US 97 slash Terrebonne Refinement Plan, Transportation Amendment, Peter Russell. Good to see you.
Evening. You won't see me long because we actually have a consultant here to present you the full-blown materials, so you don't have to suffer much through me. What I'm passing out is a revised burden of proof that ODOT submitted in response to county comments. I don't expect you to read or go through it tonight, it's just for your information. Basically, some background on the Terrebonne Refinement Plan. When the county did a transportation system plan in 2012, we had open houses up in Terrebonne and it was a traffic issue up there at that time. One of the things we went through with the communities was what do you want to see for Terrebonne? Same thing with ODOT. The consensus was monitor it and when we get to a place when ODOT feels more work is needed, we'll do a refinement plan. But preliminarily, we don't want a five-lane section, we still want to look at a couplet, traffic signals or a bypass. We came back for the Terrebonne Community Plan later on. Community Senate was the same. They also wanted some more bike ped circulation. So those are sort of the background documents. Then when it became time to do the Terrebonne Refinement Plan with ODOT in Deschutes County and Jefferson County, excuse me, yeah, Jefferson County as well because of Crooked River Ranch, they were looking at basically the five-lane versus the couplet. Mark Butorick, who's the consultant for Kittleson Associates, will come up and kind of walk you through the PowerPoint and give you more in-depth. So this is just a work session in preference to the Planning Commission's public hearing on July 25th. Also to keep in the board's back of your mind, we've talked about having the board hearing in August 6th. Both will be up in Terrebonne, so a start time for that might be something to consider and we look to the board for that as well for any information. So be happy to answer any questions now, otherwise I'll turn it over to Mark. We also have representatives from ODOT and then Deschutes County's Road Department Director, Chris Doty, is behind me. So, you know, if you have a question, we'll have plenty of people here to answer whatever question you might possibly have. So, any for me?
Yeah. Peter, I have a question. So you attached, we got the memo you did, and then, so the first document's called Exhibit C. and it's an ordinance. Is that part of the comprehensive plan or what are those pages?
Of course, I passed out everything I gave you. Yes, it's probably Exhibit C, it's probably either the exhibit to the adoption or transportation system plan.
It references meetings and things that were open, you know, it's kind of like a process.
Yeah, that'd be a TSP. That's some of the--
So that was the amended TSP, okay. And then there's another section which is the Terrebonne Community Plan.
Correct.
And so are those going to be what we're going to be asked to amend or--
That's a great question. So what we're going to be amending is the Transportation System Plan map because currently it does not show 11th Street as a state highway, so the couplet would be using the current alignment of 97 southbound, 11th Street, which is actually the old highway, would be a northbound couplet, so that has to be amended by our TSP and the Oregon Transportation Commission also has to adopt it into their system.
So will you be amending any text in these or is this kind of background?
It's more background materials because the couplet's consistent with both those documents. When we get to the TSP update, we're hoping to do also this coming year, we'll then update the language to make it more, instead of this will be done, it will be that has been done, you know, assuming that both the Planning Commission and the board recommend approval.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Peter?
All right. That'll turn it over to Mark Butorick from Kittleson.
All right, I'm going to go over here and run the PowerPoint.
All right. Good evening. So the presentation tonight, we have members, both of the Planning Commission and board that were on the advisory committee, so hopefully they've kind of kept you up to breast a little bit, but what we wanted to do tonight is just give you kind of a high-level overview in preparation for the hearings and then answer any questions that you guys might have just to get you up. There's a lot of elements to this plan, so we wanted to give you a preview on that. So, a few things tonight. Wanted to talk a little bit on how we got here, overview of the corridor needs, and then the recommended preferred alternative and kind of go into pretty good detail on that. Overview of the refinement plan, which I think each of you have received, and then talk a little bit about next steps and then open it up to questions from each of you respective groups this evening. So, the schedule and a lot of this, if you use your refinement plan, if you can't see the screen, it kind of goes a little bit in the order of the refinement plan. So we are in phase one of a three-phase process. The first phase, which you see up on the screen on blue, is the refinement plan started back in 2018, about this time roughly, and then we've continued through that. Been a series of meetings. We've had four advisory committee meetings, we've had three official public meetings, we've had a number of stakeholder meetings out at Crooked River Ranch and also in the community, and then a number of one-on-one meetings with property owners, I think, counting up almost 40 one-on-one meetings. So there've been a lot of process. As we go through this and assuming we did adoption at the county level, as Peter mentioned, we will go to then the Oregon Transportation Commission, which actually happens to be out here in Bend later, late summer, early fall, and then we would transition into the design phase and that will take us into 2020 and 2021. And then construction, and we may be able to move it up a little bit or back, but generally we'll have construction 2021, 2022 and hopefully be wrapped up before we get into 2023 if everything goes according to plan. So, corridor needs, a number of these were identified both in the community plan and the TSP previously, but there's five primary needs that we were charged to deal with in the project. One is really to accommodate growth on Highway 97 over the next 20 years. As you've noticed, driving in Deschutes County, 97 continues to grow, and not only is that local growth in central Oregon, but with the congestion on I-5, a lot of the freight traffic is moving over to 97 and will continue to move over with a lot of the bottlenecks along there. So you're seeing a large increase of freight traffic along that corridor. And to accommodate that, we really need two lanes in both directions in the Terrebonne area, and we'll talk a little bit further about that. The other four is ensure connectivity and access for all users in Terrebonne, so pedestrians, bikes, getting them across and along the 97 corridor. And then, safety issue at Lower Bridge Way and US 97, both safety and capacity, you have a number of crashes there, especially that difficult left turn out to go north to Madras. And then alleviating some of the capacity deficiencies at 97 and B or as you come in from Smith Rock Way or leave the school. And then the final piece, kind of referring back to the freight movement, is really to maintain that corridor for freight because that's the lifeblood of the area. So those are the five things that we set out to deal with. Just some highlights, I'm not going to go into a lot of details. We do have some safety issues, as I mentioned, at Lower Bridge, but also at B Avenue, Smith Rock Way and 97. We've had about 93 crashes along the corridor over the last five years, so there are some things, and as you can see in the picture, pedestrians have a little bit of difficulty getting across 97 even as it exists today. On the operations side, we have a few things that are concerning now and get worse in the future. One, again, getting out of Lower Bridge onto 97 is difficult and will continue, but the movements off of Smith Rock Way, if any of you have been up there during the pumpkin piece, that gets really difficult, but just with the recreation activities, we're continuing to have that. And the one thing you hear over and over and over is speeds, and you can see there in the graphic, the 85th percentile speeds are actually about seven miles an hour over the posted speed, so that means almost everybody, about half of the traffic is going higher than the posted speed as they're coming through the community. So those are some issues that we wanted to address in the refinement plan. Finally, on mobility, this kind of goes back to that, two lanes in each directions. The graphic you see here shows the amount of lanes on 97 from basically Lapine up through Madras, as you see in green on the screen, let's see, right here. All those sections in green are four-lane currently, and Terrebonne is really the remaining two-lane section as you proceed north of Redmond, it's kind of the next two-lane section. That section carries about 16,000 to 17,000 vehicles a day, and it's projected to go up to about 34,000 vehicles per day, which is very similar to Veterans Way in Redmond. So if you take kind of that mindset of what's happening there in Redmond, that's what you're going to see traffic grow to over the next 20 years in Terrebonne itself. So to address those needs, we really broke the project into three steps. One, addressing the corridor itself, how do we dip these two lanes in both directions? Then addressing the intersections, and then finally, how do we transition the highway in a way that slows traffic down? And we went through those step by step with the public. To start that off, last September, we had a three-day concept development workshop. I know many of you were there. We had over 130 participants. Those participants developed 64 corridor concepts, 102 intersection and 32, which started us off on our alternative analysis process, and we really appreciate the community for getting out and providing some of that guidance at the start. So those concepts, 198 of them got pared down over time. They went from 98 down to 48 and then down to 20. And then we had some more meetings with the advisory committee and continued to narrow those concepts. As part of that, I talked about earlier, we had the public meetings, we had the one-on-one meetings, but one thing that's really important to notice is in January of this year, when we presented both to the advisory committee and also to the public, the preferred, initial preferred plan, since that time, there's been a number of enhancements to that plan, and those are really a reflection of the community in the interplay. You can see the map up on the screen, all those blue properties-- You can see the map up on the screen, all those blue properties were met with one-on-one with the business owner and property owners. We went basically door-to-door and had hour-long meetings with them and really worked through a lot of the issues. There's a lot of perceptions versus reality, but there was a lot of good feedback through that process and worked with the Save Terrebonne Coalition and had a lot of good dialogues and kind of working through that. So the public process was robust, it was online throughout that entire process. So, as we came out of that, there was two preferred, or two kind of alternatives that rise to the top. There was the preferred couplet alternative, and then there was a five-lane alternative. And as you'll see on the screen and in the plan, there's a number of enhancements that happened post-January 9th. For instance, on the couplet, adding on-street parking in and around the commercial area, that was a direct feedback. There was realignment of 11th behind Ferguson's Market to provide a little bit more width in that area for operations on properties. Down on the south end, what we call the South Portal, there was the extension of the Frontage Road of 10th to bring in basically a new full-access intersection across from the Alpaca Farm and a number of other options, same thing on the five-lane. And through that, we came back in early June and had another public meeting, and I think we got a lot of, a lot of people saying, yeah, I think we're moving in the right direction and a lot of feedback. Some of that early opposition, I think as time went on, they said, hey, this makes sense, we understand why this makes sense over this. So that's how we went through the alternatives. On the next slide, and this is also in your document, there were some performance measures that we really compared, the two kind of final options, we looked at operations, we looked at mobility, we looked at right-of-way impacts, we looked at turning movement conflicts and accessibility to businesses. We also looked at access to Lower Bridge. You've probably heard in the media, and over time, one of the original concepts didn't allow for a direct left turn from Lower Bridge to go to Madras. We went back to the drawing board and came up with an option that allowed that to come in, and that got modified throughout that process. And at the end of the day, when you kind of tallied it up, we were looking at about 27 million for the preferred couplet and about 40-plus million for the five-lane. The major differences is the five-lane has a lot of right-of-way impact, and that tended to drive the cost up, and also had a little bit additional improvements just overall from that standpoint. So, I wanted to highlight two of the key differences and just kind of relate them back to you, because you'll hear as we go into the process. Conflicts and accessibility, and this was one of the big differentials between the couplet and even what is out there today. And what we found was a couplet actually reduced conflicts along the corridor by about 60% because all those full-access intersections where you can go left, right, from all different approaches, when you turn it to one way, now you don't have as many conflicts. It simplifies the intersection as a pedestrian, you can only really get hit from one way, hopefully, there's cars just coming southbound or northbound, but it also just simplifies the overall process. So we were able to reduce, and you can see on this slide, the existing, there's about 659 conflicts from the south end and the north end of the corridor, and with a couplet, that reduces down to about 263 conflicts along the corridor, so a big savings there from a safety standpoint. Five-lane, actually a little slight increase in the amount of conflicts along the corridor just because of the widening on that. So that, that's just one I want to point out. The other one, Peter mentioned earlier, is the alignment with the adopted plans. The couplet is actually called out both in the existing Deschutes County TSP as well as the Terrebonne Community Plan as an option that the community wanted to see investigated. The other was a bypass option, we looked at that early on, and I think a lot of people liked that, but what they didn't like was the $100 million-plus price tag, and that was probably the bare minimum, it was probably going to be more than 150 to 200 million. But those were the two alternatives, both in the community plan and the TSP. So the couplet actually lines up with previous adopted documents by these two bodies, and it really allows us to go forward. The other thing that's in the community plan was to keep 97 at three lanes, to not divide the community further. Basically, they didn't want to widen from three to five lanes back at that time, so again, this stays consistent, because you have two lanes, southbound and two lanes northbound, you actually narrow the current 97, because right now you have three lanes out there for pedestrians to cross. That'll narrow, now it'll be just southbound lanes, but it'll be a narrower cross-section for the pedestrians to go across. So the preferred couplet, I'll walk you through this south to north, and we'll zoom into it as we go. So on the south end, I kind of mentioned this, down by the Alpaca driveway, we're going to extend the Frontage Road on the west side down there, so you'll be able to, all those properties continue and come out to an intersection. It'll have northbound and southbound left turn lanes, so improving safety both to the Frontage Road side and also to the Alpaca side, and it'll kind of create the initial gateway into the community on that. So that's kind of the first major element of the highway. Moving up, just south of the commercial area right now, is a chicane, and that's where we basically bring the highway out, we create some horizontal curvature as you come in, so you'll swing out to the east, swing back to the west, and then swing out to the east. What that does is allow us to slow vehicles coming into the community, and it's kind of a gradual slowdown with the target of trying to get those vehicles down into the 30 mile an hour range as they come through that. The other thing that it allows is the U-turn movement, so if you're coming south on 97 and want to turn, this allows you to go back up, and this is kind of a critical element that ties into Smith Rock Way and B Avenue, because it helps do a little reconfiguration up there. So that's the second major element. The third I talked about a little bit is, south of B Avenue, where Ferguson Market, Chevron, the hardware is providing on-street loading and on-street parking. One of the things is, 11th Street right now is kind of used as parking and loading for a lot of those businesses, so they were worried is, okay, if that's paved, where are we going to do this? So we kind of worked with each property owner to make sure there was going to be more parking on-street, both northbound and southbound, and also places for trucks to pull off and load in those areas. And then also on the other side of the street to provide some of that as well. That parking also extends up on both sides of the Pump House property to provide additional parking on there. If you've been up there in the evenings, they run a really good business and have a lot of traffic, or parking on 11th and others places, so we wanted to make sure there was adequate on-street parallel parking, both southbound 97 and northbound 97 in there. So, one other key element was the capping of the canal of, that goes along what we would call 12th Street. 12th Street is one block to the east of 11th that we've been focused on, and to provide access to those businesses, and what we heard a lot through the community was not to have, not be required to go on the highway to make your trips. So this two-block section between A Avenue and C Avenue allows for a local street to be developed, and basically, we've worked with the addition district, we'll cap that and build a street, and then the canal will just flow underneath the street and that location. But that was, again, a refinement that came over the last several months, talking with the business and property owners. The next one, this is probably the most complex part of it, just for people to understand, is the conversion of Smith Rock Way as it comes in between 11th and the current 97, it'll be converted to one-way only westbound. And the reason that we did that was to simplify the movements along there, but what that also allows us to do is not to have traffic signals on the corridor. So if you're coming from Smith Rock Way, you'll come to a stop sign at 11th, which would be northbound 97, and then cross, and then you come to a stop sign, but then you're just yielding to southbound traffic and taking a left to go, go down, or you can go across to the school. Then a lot of people ask, well, if you're exiting the school, how do you get back across? So there's two things going on. If you've been up there, they're starting a project, the school district is actually going to do some of their loading and parent pickup up on C Avenue, so they're kind of shifting things. But if you come out of the school, and we worked with the school a lot on this, you'll turn right, go down, and that U-turn that I just showed you, you'll turn around that, and then you'll come back up and you can hit A or hit Smith Rock Way and go out there. A lot safer movements, they're all right turns, and you don't have those T-bone type of collisions that you can with crossing movements that they currently have. So the school district was very supportive, they had a member on the, their superintendent was on the advisory board, and we've met with the principal on that piece. The other element is, we'll have some sort of active control for pedestrian and bicycle crossing. Could be the rapid flash beacons that you see here in Bend, where you see it's kind of the strobe lights on both sides that go, when a pedestrian goes up, the yellow lights kind of go off. It could be a signal, and we'll refine that, but there'll be some sort of more protected crossing for the pedestrians and the bicyclists at that location as well. So then, moving further up, for, again, for local circulation, this is up by the Jehovah Witness Church, is a new street between the highway and 13th. This is H Avenue, and this is to allow, so if you're going one way and you want to turn back around, we wanted to be able to allow these businesses and the residents a way to do this, so this is a local street connection that will go back into 13th, that'll allow people that are accessing those residential areas to use that, but also for the church and for the property to the north of that, the residential property. Right now, under the design, if we didn't have this, they would have to turn right and somehow turn around on 97 and come back, so this was a way to serve that property and give them access back southbound within the community. The last piece, and this was probably where most of the focus was, especially with Crooked River Ranch, was the interchange at the north. I'll do this on the screen, hopefully you guys can see, let's see if I can get this up here. So here is 11th Street, northbound. If you're coming northbound and going out to Crooked River Ranch, there'll be a left turn pocket, you'll go under the, whoops, sorry about that. You'll go under 97, and then into this roundabout, and then out of the roundabout on to Lower Bridge Way. If you're coming, yeah, that's a difficulty with these things. If you're coming from Lower Bridge, you'll go into the roundabout, come around, and then go out on that one way, and that'll take you to go north to Madras. If you're coming south on US 97, you can see there's just a loop ramp and then an on-ramp, and those get you to and from Lower Bridge Way. And the reason we introduced a roundabout, I know there's a lot of fan of roundabouts up in Terrebonne, but this was the only way that we could get access to the north in the capacity that we needed there, so we came in with this, and I think Crooked River Ranch was very appreciative of finding a solution to give them that direct access, and quite a safe solution, because as you can see, as you're turning left to go north, you're basically one-way traffic and you're, that's your only opposition, is to turn on to that and go in that direction. So that's how the couplet works at the north end. A few other elements, long-term, eventually, when funding comes along, there'll be widening of 97 to the south to fill in the gap just north of Redmond, and then to the north, and then we have some local street improvements that'll help as development goes on over time within the Terrebonne community. None of these would be developed as part of this initial project that has the current funding. The other things is highway transition and speed reduction, so we'll have speed feedback signs, we have curbed, curbed streets, narrower streets, we have the chicane, both on the north and the south end, welcome signs, to really kind of change the character to the drivers as they come into the community. Landscaping options, and.
I'm from Heffner.
That's right. There you go, you like that?
I'm from Heffner.
Oh, okay, see, we were working for May. So landscape options, both at the north and south end, and this is probably something the county, as we get further on, will kind of want to engage the community of what's the look and feel of that on the landscape side, but there's some great areas for both landscaping and gateway entrances on that, so that's, gives you a little sense of that. And then the overview of the refinement plan, we've went through that, the document you have in front of you really documents those needs, reviews that public engagement process, summarizes the alternative process, and then memorializes the plan with the implementation. The land use application that, that you'll be looking at here coming up is an amendment, like Peter said, to the Deschutes County TSP to directly specify this plan, and that does a number of things. Not only does it allow the project to go forward, but it allows certainty. A lot of the property owners we talked to up there, they're kind of holding back on investments, because they're like, you know, how is this going to work? So this, by adopting this, you give some certainty up there. It allows development applications to be reviewed and potentially conditions to be allocated correct, or in a correct manner and in alignment with what the plan is. And then it also finally sets the stage for the OTC adoption process, and then downstream, a jurisdictional transfer process, as Peter mentioned, 11th that you guys own and maintain would transfer to the state, so the state would take over the maintenance of that, but there is a legal process that we would have to transfer that right-of-way downstream, and this, this is the first step in that type of process. Yes?
So a couple slides back, you talk about the alignment with adopted plans, TSP and community plan, and it says yes on here, so I guess I'm trying to understand the next step or the form of the process.
Yeah, so what, yeah, the TSP, and yeah, maybe we'll just kind of flip here to the next, next step on that, but the TSP currently just says couplet or bypass. So what you're now doing is providing more specificity of what specifically the couplet is. The current TSP just has the, you know, six letters, so you're really defining, here's what it's going to be, and this is how it's going to be developed.
Now that it's more of a stable defined plan, let's adopt this specifically.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and it allows, so if a developer comes in, in front of the Planning Commission, Planning Commission can say, okay, we're going to get this right-of-way for this, and here's where you need to put the sidewalk. Today, you don't have that. Yep. All right, so next steps from here, the Planning Commission is scheduled for July 25th at the Terrebonne Community School at 5:30 for their first, first hearing there. Assuming that goes forward and well, they'll make a recommendation, or a recommendation to the board, or they could push it back to staff, or they could make a recommendation with additional conditions or adds or subtracts. And then we would go to the board for that same process as well, for the adoption process. We're currently, and Sharon wanted me to ask you guys, and we can get this done at some point, but we're currently looking at Tuesday, August 6th, and Sharon's understanding was the board was desiring to actually have the hearing up there, so we do have the school reserve for the 6th of August, which is a Tuesday evening. She asked ODOT and us what time, and it was like, well, how about we ask the board what time that they would want to be up.
Ask the board, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be the, the board, Planning Commission would already be done, so we can talk about that here as we get into questions, but that's kind of the current plan, but we wanted to make, confirm and make sure, one, you wanted to go there, and two, what time would make most sense to have that from there. Once that's all done, and assuming we make it through, then it would be off to the Oregon Transportation Commission. We're going to talk a little bit tomorrow. If all this goes with clockwork, theoretically, we might be able to get in front of them while they're here in Bend, but otherwise, we'll, we'll find them where they are for their next hearing in the state. They meet basically once a month for most of the year, so that would be the next, next step there. And other than that, that is all I have for this evening, so Peter and I and ODOT staff are here for any questions that you, you may have this evening.
I have a question.
Mark?
Thank you for your presentation. And this may be as to Nick and staff too, has there been an outreach or advertisement for the meeting on the 25th at Culver to get people there?
I remain Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner. Yeah, and the notice of our public hearing, it specifies July 25th, and so we notified, it's a legislative amendment, so technically, we could just put something in the paper and call it good, but we also have the option of notifying within 250 feet of the proposed couplet, which is what we went through to get more of a public announcement, so there'll be, there's one in the papers, normal, but also we notified all the property owners in 250 feet of the right-of-way on either side of the July 25th hearing that you're having up in Terrebonne.
Thank you.
And then the other thing that should probably mention is that. And then, the other thing that should probably mention is that you're familiar with House Bill 2017, which gave ODOT some construction money that they have, I think 20 million set aside for Terrebonne. So, this is one of those plans that there's actually construction funding that's tied to it and coming down the pike as well. Like, sometimes we go through these plans and we, you know, at some point, a miracle occurs and we get funding. So, in this one, we actually have designated funding for the area.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I heard you say Culver. Were you intending to say Terrebonne?
Yeah.
Okay.
I worked at Culver, so.
Understand, however, Culver's close, and they have opinions.
Yeah, no, I meant Terrebonne. I'm sorry.
Well, the other would be the notice to Crooked River Ranch, because they're all, there was quite a bit of interest in that. So, how do they get notified? Because they don't necessarily, it's kind of a split between the streets in Jefferson County.
There were 300 people at the meeting I was at in Crooked River. At least, yeah, it was huge. Maybe 200, 300.
Again, we have representatives from Crooked River Ranch on the various committees. So, I'm assuming, working through their homeowners association, and that way that they'll get the, the notice out.
The nice thing about having a consultant, you're the closest thing we're ever going to get to a crystal ball. So, you, you talk about potential completion in 2023, which a lot of us are always disappointed by deadlines, and it don't quite happen. And then, you refer to a 2040 plan. So, we have 15 to 17 years till 2040. What's the crystal ball saying 2040? Is that a date that's supposed to be good for another X years?
Yeah. So, as, as part of the requirement, ODOT and generally county, we got to make sure these work for at least 20 years. So, the good thing with this project, it actually worked for 20 years, and we did some sensitivity. It goes quite, quite a ways beyond that. And, you know, that's a crystal ball out there, but I think you could get into, you know, 2050, 2060. I think Commissioner Henderson at one point asked me, you know, the, the weak link that would eventually probably need something is you could see the need for possibly, at a worst case, maybe some signals there at Smith Avenue and B at some point down the line, but that even has a lot of capacity. But that's probably the weakest link, if you look just from a capacity standpoint. Obviously, the north end, you got an interchange on that end. On the south end, you got a lot of good accessibility in that one way. And I know most of you have been up in Madras. It really simplifies things. Even look in Sandy, which has a lot more traffic, you can get in and out of those businesses fairly easily. So, I think we have, you know, some good, good tread on this one that we can run for a while. But, yeah, at some point, and it's what we told the community, at some point, you'd probably be looking at a bypass, but that's probably 40-plus years out there.
I hope they won't be on the road in 2040.
Yeah.
I have kind of a follow-up to that. Going back to the projections of the amount of traffic, comparing Terrebonne in 2040 to Redmond and now, basically, or whatever. Redmond now, it's not really surprising to me that it's grown. I've been here the whole 30 years that it's grown from whatever is 10,000 people to 30, 30,000 plus. For Terrebonne to get to this, you know, it's not 20,000 more people living in Terrebonne like Redmond.
Yep.
So, that's a huge amount of highway traffic. And is that, where's your projection coming?
Yeah, there's a...
I mean, that's a, that's really a lot of people going up and down 97.
There's three things that play into this. One is, as you start looking at available land for residential use in this area, the next place, Terrebonne obviously has a number of parcels. Crooked River Ranch still has quite a lot of development. So, we made sure out there that we were covering all that piece. And then, obviously, you got Madras. And as we continue to grow and bump up against urban growth boundaries, you're going to see those fill in, which puts, puts a lot of traffic on that part. So, that's one element. The other element is I-5. It's not, there's some constraints on I-5. You know, we might be able to do a Columbia River Crossing at some point in the next decade. But for freight, you're going to see 97 continue to get more and more and more freight. I mean, we're at 20% freight up there right now, and that's just going to grow. And the reason it is, it's a longer route, as, as we well know, but from a trucking company standpoint, is it's reliable. It may take another 40 minutes than I-5 could take, but they know it's just another 40 minutes. And in this day and age, in the trucking, you're so much determined on those time, and because of the new safety requirements and the electronics, their drivers have to stop. And so, you're going to see more and more of that coming, and that's, that's a big driver of it as well. And then, I think just Oregon in general, as we get more and more, you know, the recreation over here, that's another component of it. So, it's really the recreation, freight's a huge one, and then just kind of the continued development of residential, serving, you know, the greater hub of Bend over time.
I think it's even more than that. I had to drive through Portland one time, Seattle, through rush hour, rush hour. And, you know, you can come through Allensburg and come down, and it's, it's, there's no rush hour.
That's right, that's right.
It's a huge difference.
Yeah.
So, Mark, it appears to me that we've done a reasonably good job of slowing traffic northbound. The southbound is still just a straight, unimpeded shot. Is there any...
Yeah. So, the southbound, and it's not as, it's not as, when you look at the drawing on there, and it's over here, we, we are doing some lateral shift, and the idea is in here to do some treatments both on the side and in this median. And that's one of the reasons we made more of a loop ramp, is we're trying to de-emphasize that interchange as much as we can. And I think as we start to look at gateway treatments, you know, lighting and different things up here, lighting, street lighting type of things. But it, there wasn't a lot that we could do up there as we went through. But we tried to create a little bit of horizontal shift of the highway, so the driver goes, oh, something's changing. And instead of today, you know, it's really until you get to Thrift Way, you see, oh, something's changed. What we're going to try to do with the curbs and sidewalks and the lighting is try, try to change that earlier in people's mind and have the speed feedback signs in this area, and hopefully be able to knock that speed down a little bit. But it will change, because, you know, through here, if you recall, there's guard rail. It just looks high-speed. After this is done, we're going to have sidewalks, a buffered bike lane on that side. So, it will change the character. But you're, you're exactly right, Dale. It's, there is a little bit of difference. So, northbound, definitely, we got it. Southbound, we're going to have a little bit of work to go forward on.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, as you look at the growth of the communities and the growth of the high-speed through traffic, well, I guess I have two questions, if I may. The first is, looking, for example, at the New England thruways, one of the major impediments has been the growth of local communities that travel seven miles on the major highway. How, do we have till 2040 before that starts happening here? In other words, the road doesn't work, because basically, you have so much...
Oh, well, yeah, the road, the roads didn't at the point that it doesn't work. I mean, the next three or four years, you're in a position right now that, you know, people trying to get on at B Avenue, Smith, Smith Rock Way, and at Lower Bridge, they can't, right now, they're struggling. So, it's not...
I mean, in your 2040...
Oh, in here? So, okay, maybe I missed, so in 2040, your question is, how much more do, do we have?
Will your roads still work?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's what I think Commissioner Beeger is. I think we probably have at least another 20 years beyond that. I think we have about 40 years' worth of lifespan out of this, this solution that we have in front of us.
And so, at what point would we want, or would we have to trigger a major interstate going across this ground?
Or, like a bypass of, of, of Terrebonne, or...
Well, or you put it right through the middle. That's not unprecedented.
Yeah. I'll tell you from everybody we heard that lives there today, now, they may not live there in 40 years, but it was pretty strong. If, if they could have built the bypass now, they would have done that. That's by far the preferred. And to build that through, and that's kind of what you saw with the five lane and even the community plan, is you start putting that much volume, and it's kind of what we're seeing in South Redmond, it just becomes such a barrier that the community really wants it to go around, around the backside and around it. But the nice thing is, because of that being an exception area land, it's, you know, it's not a city, you know, we should have corridors preserved both to the east and west. I think as we went through it, the west kind of looked a little bit more easy to traverse, just because of the topography on that side. The other side, you have the rail line, and it makes it a little bit more difficult coming down that side. But, yeah, you shouldn't, hopefully, none of you will be here on the commission when you got to make that decision and...
No, except it may be a wonderful shovel-ready project for the federal government infrastructure money when it comes. But I guess, overall, you know, we've been seeing individual projects just because of the way it's been broken up. I mean, I presume that there is an overall coordination plan, that, for example, when you put 15 roundabouts and Highway 20 and all these changes that are going on here, that they all work together.
Yeah, and maybe I'll, I could defer, I don't know if Bob wants to come up, but I could bring Bob Townsend from ODOT to talk a little bit more on that policy side and give you a little bit more perspective on that.
Bob Townsend, ODOT area manager here in Central Oregon. So, it's difficult after the 2040 numbers to assess where we're with autonomous vehicles. We're not sure what growth models to use. We don't know where, where we'll be. Will highway traffic be as important? Will there be more vehicles, but they're autonomous, so they can work closer together, and we can operate under high capacity? So, that's why we generally use the 20-year horizon. And then, like Mark said, on this one, we're good to 2050, 60 with some slight improvements as, as maybe signals. So, the bypass, yeah, it's, it could be a long-term plan. Right now, our plan is to extend, you know, the four lanes to the high bridge from Redmond. But, you know, those are priority-based, and we, you know, really, that's beyond what the planning horizon, where we're really making a good guess. Otherwise, it's just, you know, it, it's just a wild guess on what our next priority would be for a bypass. And as you said, if you're looking out to 2050, and you don't need a bypass, having a shovel-ready project, you know, 30 years in advance is probably not realistic.
So, the, in terms of our, going forward, the two hearings are for the purpose of getting public testimony about these primarily, where we...
Yeah, they're...
Hearing input and that.
Yeah, there's a classic hearing where you're going to hear testimony and then make a recommendation. Planning Commission really kind of has three options. Either they're going to recommend the plan as is to the board, they'll recommend it with changes, or, you know, deny it or kick it back. Those are kind of their three options. And then, when it comes to the board, you're basically in a legislative mode, because you're amending your TSP. So, you're taking hearings and then voting to amend, amend the TSP at that point.
So, this is really kind of a work session. We're going to, two birds with one stone, by having us both get kind of a work session. One thing I brought up before, and I was on the advisory committee, as commissioners know that, but too, and so, I've been to a lot of meetings, I still, to me, besides the one-week point being up at the, at B, I still think the roundabout down here is, I live on a roundabout, 15th and Reed, and I drive it every day. I'm very worried about the, the amount of traffic at the lower X. And I just, I can picture myself day and night, because I drive through a roundabout two or three, or maybe four or five times a day. There's a place there where there's a lot of traffic going to bungle up. And one of the things we learned about the big fire events and disasters with, in the big forest fire things, is, is the ability to evacuate. And that, those things, in my experience, roundabouts generally work really well in low to moderate traffic. They don't work very well, and people are not happy with them in a lot of traffic. And I worry that, so I still am interested in the off-ramp off of going southbound. I still, and I, and it's going to come up at the hearings, and I still would be interested in the cost of that, even if it's a million or $2 million more. I think it's, to me, it's something we should think about, I, just having worked with that. And I don't, that's really the only big question that I haven't, in my own mind and resolventness, is kind of a work session. I want to just throw that out to people to think about, because I, you've got people trying to get around that, that are coming off from the north, southbound, hitting the people that are trying to get out of the ranch, hitting the people that are trying to get from 11th to the ranch. And I just, I can see them backing up all the way under the underpass. I can see them backing up all the way. I mean, I've seen, you know, in Reed Market, we'll back up even without the trains. I mean, in bad, with, I mean, trains is one of ours, but we'll back up, you know, a quarter or a half mile. And, and people, they're frustrated. And I, in terms of the happiness of users, I'm worried about, God, they sure, you know, screwed this up. And so, I, I want to look at that factor very closely. It's, it's something I already feel about, you know, I've thought about it a lot.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, yeah.
We've talked about it before.
I know we have, and I just wanted to throw it out.
So, a couple of things I just want to clarify for, you know, even after this adoption, we'll be back again. We have an IGA currently that talks about us working together with Deschutes County, Jefferson County to create this refinement plan. But as Mark has mentioned and Peter, this is a TSP amendment, really adopting a couplet. It's not refining all the little details. So, that's one of the items we'll work on. There's a lot of little intricacies that we're going to keep designing on, and we'll bring back options. And when we hopefully enter into an agreement that, that accepts the additional money that Deschutes County has in their capital program for this, you know, that's another time we can tie additional other side street improvements, things like that, that don't necessarily need to be adopted in a TSP, but just are part of our normal design process as we're moving forward. As Peter mentioned, a lot of times, this is just the paragraph adoption, and then 15 years later, when we have money, we start refining. Everything's compressed on this, because we have a limitation on when we need to spend the money. But that's one of the details that we've included in, in our analysis. And there's some other things like that that aren't necessarily shown on the map, but they don't really fall in the TSP approval process.
So, we're, so you're saying that when we make decisions, the planning commission makes decisions on 25th, and we make it a week or two later, we're not, all that stuff hasn't been decided, we can still, those are things we can still...
Yeah, design details, right? I mean, what you're adopting is the overall concept plan. We still have quite a bit of refinement to do. It's, it's that, it's that level for us, is how much money do we spend on something, designing it, when we don't know yet if it's going to be approved, and that balance. And, you know, as we meet with property owners, we, we've met with them all, but there'll be other things that come up that may open other discussions. But they'll fall within the concept of the, the couplet.
It's like, because Crooked River does have as many people as Madras does, you know, 6,000, and I use Lower Bridge all the time. And I know when you go there, you have to pray if you get to go north and not, but, and not get head. So, that's, you know, turning all those circles seems a little bit, a lot to do if we do have like a major emergency and people are trying to evacuate, and they only, they're going to all be coming out that way. That's, that's going to be, that can be very...
Yeah, I mean, we can present additional information around the, you know, we have a per-hour number of trips on each one.
But I mean, an emergency is like...
Correct.
Emergency is a different issue.
Yeah. One thing, just in Reed Market, a little bit different in, in the movements, but just so you guys kind of understand, is the, the people coming from Lower Bridge, they have almost the ultimate right-of-way, right-of-way as they come in here, because this movement here to go southbound, they're not, the only person that...
I get that.
They're only, the only person they're competing with is the person that may even want to do a U-turn. So, that one's really clear. And like you, Commissioner Henderson, you pointed out, this movement here and this movement here, basically, the to-and-from Madras are the ones that compete with this...
11th Street.
This one there. But we did look, you know, if we want to put eventually an off-ramp there, we can tie it into this configuration, so you, you could lessen that. But right now, with the projections even 2040, the, the movements to and from the north are still pretty darn low, so that conflict, unlike Reed Market, where you got a few other movements that are competing out there. This one, it's really going to...
You're going to see a lot of this, and a lot of this, and very little of those two movements in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, but it's just funny how they add it. I mean, there's, I just picked the one that's closest to my house, but I also knew Brookswood and Reed Market. And I mean, I know a lot of roundabouts, and whenever it gets heavy from one way, boy, they just stack up. It's, it's a little like...
Mr. Palasek.
So, in an emergency, when you're looking at student body right, student body left, you're going in one direction. And there's the, there's the capability with the circle. If you're looking at just frustration at rush hour, that's one thing. But in the event of an evacuation or emergency, you're usually moving in one direction. You can actually reverse lanes and actually double up on what you're doing. So, there's the ability, keep that in mind. The circle actually creates some additional options, especially in those emergency situations. So, it's, anyway.
And you can have an emergency crossing as well. I mean, that also works. You actually close the circle around and it just goes straight across.
Exactly. Because you're no longer fighting people in a state of emergency. They're, oh, no, I'm heading to Crooked, no, you're not.
But it's a different test.
Going this way.
There's always those that are.
Yeah. Mr. Hudson?
So, even before moving to the states, I had 40 years' experience with roundabouts. I mean, in the UK, it has the highest per capita number. And in the south, it's been sufficient to stop the roads working at all now. And the reason for it is, they work great at low-traffic density, where there is a good balance between... good balance between all competing roads and where nothing unusual is going on, where people panic and it gets blocked so very easily. And so, you know, I think there are good benefits, probably this side of 2040. I wouldn't be too certain you'd get very close to 2040. But, you know, I think like all of these experiments, we're gonna have to make our own mistakes. But, I think to stress-test something as complicated as that, when you have a fire emergency, I would hope it's an analysis that you routinely do, because we have a lot of fire emergencies, and I doubt whether they're gonna decrease.
Very good point. The one thing, we've made this over and over, but it will come up in the hearings, is people have been confused, they keep thinking there's a roundabout on ninety-seven. This roundabout's not on ninety-seven, and nobody that's going north-south has to go through the roundabout, so just, you know, keep that in mind as you're hearing from folks. They have, I think we've got that message out, but that'll probably still come up.
The one thing I'd add, that, you know, if something's coming from the west and you're fleeing, we do have a county road system. You know, there's Thirty First, there's Nineteenth, and everybody has to go to ninety-seven to get out, so there are alternate routes.
So, unless there's other questions, if the board could give us a little advice on what time on the sixth, because we'd rather have you guys make the decision on when you want to be there than us dictate when you want to be...
I have a sled meeting that day, I think it's over at five. I checked on it, yeah. So, it would have to be, we could be there at six, right?
Six, yeah.
Okay.
I think six.
We can tell Sharon six, then.
What do you think?
Are you on six-thirty?
Where are we, are we just going to Terrebonne?
You're saying that where's the sled meeting?
Well, no, Lipstick or something, there was...
Oh, Lipstick, yeah.
Yeah, Lipstick is here. Yeah, Lipstick is here, so it's only a half an hour.
Well, I think you would want to start probably sooner than five-thirty, and the later we start, the later the day gets over.
It's wonderful.
I like this meeting at five-thirty.
And there's a point to go out to Terrebonne.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yeah, that meeting's from three-thirty to five, so Lipstick, so, we could be there at six.
I have no idea how much, you know, how many people will be there. There's been a lot of citizen input already, you know, and so, I don't know, there'll be, if you want to be heard or not, still. How do you feel for that?
Six would be safe.
Yeah, I mean, I have a feel that we're, there's still quite a bit of vocal opposition, and then it's just a matter of what we want to do with the supporters and how much we encourage people to come speak on our behalf if we're concerned. I mean, you know how this goes, right? Most of the people who come are in opposition. If they're satisfied, they stop coming to meetings, so it'll just be a balance there. But, we don't, it's just a handful of people that are still pretty vocal, there's not as much, you know, we've met with the Save Terrebonne group over and over, and they're pretty satisfied now, so we haven't been getting the phone calls or the ASCO dots that we were, so it's anybody's guess, but I don't assume to be a lot.
Bob, do you have any sense of where the opposition is coming from? Is it off of Eleventh Street owners, or is it at a Crooked River Ranch? You have a sense?
It's definitely not Crooked River Ranch anymore. I mean, I think after, you know, the full movement here, obviously, there's some concerns how the roundabout works, and it's a little confusing. There's a few people on Eleventh Street, but, you know, there's also this no-change group, right? And, you know, it's hard to meet with, it's easy to meet with a business owner and go over their concerns and get to a remedy, it's hard to meet with someone who doesn't want to see any improvements in Terrebonne, and so there's still a handful of those.
I talked to them, yes.
Some of them get a hold of us, we get calls or emails. Nick, did you have a comment on...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nick Leelak, the Shrewsbury County Community Development Director. One of the issues with predetermining the board's calendar and schedule is the Planning Commission's opportunity to hear the public input and consider it. Predetermining August sixth, with all due respect, I understand this is on a tight timeline, if the Planning Commission has a robust public hearing and they do hear a lot of opposition that night, I'm a bit concerned about putting the Planning Commission in a position where they have to listen to all the testimony and literally render a decision or a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that night. Now, they could continue and do so a week later, or, but two weeks later, it puts us to August eighth, their next regularly scheduled meeting. So, we can notice the meeting if there's, if the board is open to opening and continuing or something of that nature, I just want to be respectful that the Planning Commission is the county's Citizen Involvement Advisory Committee, and their primary objective is to listen to citizen input. So, not knowing what we're gonna have, and it's terrific that we're gonna be holding this in Terrebonne, which is convenient for all sides to participate, so we just don't know. So, I respect that this is on a quick timeline, but I also want to be very respectful of the Planning Commission's role.
And we talked about that today, it's probably kind of more tentative, if everything goes well, you have it, otherwise, I think the next date was like the twenty-sixth of August, so there was, we had some gaps that we were dealing with there, but that makes a lot of sense.
Does it mean you have problems with our schedule, or...
It was a combination of availability and the people and so forth, so that's...
We're not in the next week.
Yeah.
There's also a ten-day notification requirement for the board's public...
Maybe we should talk it over a little more. I mean, we don't have to give that notice today.
No.
On August sixth, we could talk it over a little bit.
Yep.
You know, when the Planning Commission's meeting, and you can, you can talk it over amongst yourselves, that's fine.
Yeah, whatever's...
Yeah, because it's been a long, you know, process, so they want to finish it up right, I think. Stack too close, I don't know.
The Planning Commission, and I'm just throwing this out there, we could meet, take the hearing and have another meeting, I think, the following week, which would be prior to the sixth, and have a chance to reflect and come to a decision. I hate to schedule more meetings than what we currently have, but some things are important, and we need to do them.
So, why don't you, well, then that's up to you, you all, really, and Nick, and you guys, you can talk it over tonight, or whenever you want, I mean, for the first step.
Well, really depends on public input, though. I mean, if it's easy, it's easy, but if it isn't, it isn't.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I doubt we could actually forecast, anyway. Can I just ask a detailed question about your map behind you? In that area that's surrounded by the highways in both directions, do anybody, does any people live in there, or is it all commercials?
It's all commercially zoned, yeah. There's one house down here, but it's unoccupied, and it's gonna be, it sounds like it's gonna be redeveloped, but there may be a renter in there, so I'll take that back, there might be one person that lives between the highways. We good?
Any other questions for Mark?
This is Grant.
All right. Thank you very much.
Considering that we're at like the first meeting and the second one, it's come a long ways.
All righty, we're going to take about a ten-minute break, and the Planning Commission's going to go back to our normal meeting, chairs up behind us, and we will resume our deliberations from two nights ago.
And we're excused, right?
You are excused.
It's cool, Zach.
So at this time, we would like to reconvene our discussion on non-prime resource lands and amendments. To my knowledge, we have made a decision on what I would call as option one, and we were preparing to deal with option number two. So I would refer at this time to either Peter or Zek to bring us up to speed on where you think we're at on this, and then we will open it up for discussions.
Sure. So Zekri Heck, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department, for their record. Four hours ago, on Tuesday, the Planning Commission met and had the first opportunity to deliberate on the non-prime resource land amendments. A formal motion was made to recommend approval of Component One.
You just need to speak into the microphone, they can hear you in the back.
So, two nights ago, on July 9th, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the Board of Accounting Commissioners approving, recommending approval of the comprehensive plan policies that identify opportunities to redesignate six areas committed to residential use that were platted or conveyed prior to state enabling planning legislation. And that motion passed, I believe, five in approval, one abstention. And then there is a lengthy discussion about proposal number two. Real quick, I'll summarize that. Component Two establishes comprehensive plan policies that allow for the redesignation, or specifies the state law and some additional county policies focused on redesignating exclusive farm use and forest use zone properties to what we're calling non-prime resource lands, also known as non-resource lands in state rules. So there was no formal recommendation, there was a lengthy discussion and a decision that waiting forty-eight hours until tonight would be best to move forward.
That's how I remember it. Peter?
If I may, just for clarity, staff offered two amendments to Component One. As you recall, one was to eliminate the one policy that acknowledged the need to do a Goal Five analysis. We acknowledged during the deliberation process, or reemphasized that that policy is no longer necessary because we're not introducing any new conflicting use. And then the second policy modification is just to clarify that until the policy and a subsequent zone is in place, that, and this is really getting to Component Two, so maybe I'll hold there. That's, I guess, the clarity that would be helpful at some point this evening is whether you felt for Component One, that one revision that staff introduced, removing the requirement to do a Goal Five analysis, is included in that motion. Either way, we'll introduce it to the board, but just, it would be helpful to know what the Planning Commission's thoughts were on that.
Thank you. Okay, fellow commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, just one additional recap. We did have a motion and a second that was tabled that indicated that we should ask the county commissioners or recommend to them that we write a joint letter to the LCDC asking them to, again, work towards promulgating rules in this particular area. I think we all agreed to table that due to the fact that, based on what our decisions were, that might influence the outcome of the letter, and I just didn't want to lose that thread. So at the end of our deliberations, I would hope you'd bring that back to the board.
I have it on my notes. Mr. Hudson?
So, towards the end of the discussion that we had, I think we started to narrow into a decision framework which would, I think, allow a structuring of our further deliberations around Proposal Two. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose that the recognition notwithstanding that the majority of the growth in the county in terms of housing and other developments associated with population growth will be within the urban growth boundary, we should recommend that the county extend the principle to allow NPR zoning of other EFU forest zoned land throughout the county based upon criteria to be developed and a process to be determined suitable for inclusion in the comprehensive plan revision that was mentioned last time.
In the form of a motion?
That is what I'm proposing as a motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Been properly moved and seconded, and I think Commissioner Hudson can probably get you a copy of that, Ashley, at some point for what it is, because I'm going to refer back to his notes on this.
Yeah.
So it has been...
Should I read it again?
Yeah.
I mean, just...
Please, please read it.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just explain how I got there, because I think it would, for our members who unfortunately were absent, they may help pick up where we were and where we're going. So the recommendation was picking up on the Commissioner Swisher recognition that, in fact, most growth will continue to be in the urban growth boundary, and I think that should be incorporated. So we recommend that the county extend the principle to allow non-prime resource land rezoning of other EFU forest zoned land throughout the county based upon the criteria that we have to develop and a process which has to be determined suitable for inclusion in the comprehensive plan revision. The reason why I think it's important is that much of the criticism that I heard was based upon the ad hoc nature of the process, the perception at least that it was. I mean, the Planning Commission was asked by the Board of County Commissioners to recommend upon the principle that, in fact, lands could be rezoned as non-resource lands, right? That's the state's definition. And we voted to recommend the principle by applying it on, to six uniquely defined properties identified by their historical designation as platted and/or conveyed entities in existence prior to the land use laws coming into effect. And so, Component Two, really, the proposal would extend the principle that's already now been established by the commission to other EFU and forest zone properties in the county to actually create a potential process for spot zoning based upon, now, I heard Peter say last time that the NP-20 designation, obviously the NPR-20, the numerical part of it, at least, you felt you were not hard set on, but obviously the ability to extend the non-prime resource land principle to other spot zoning opportunities is really what the weight of this is. And so, having already now approved those six properties, clearly then, we would have, if the recommendation is picked up by the Board of County Commissioners, we would then have non-prime resource zoning within the county. And I think all my motion does then is to extend it to establish a process and criteria by which that might be considered. Thank you.
You're welcome. And my understanding this is, then, this is not in a direct, what I want to say here, in agreement or opposition to Option Two that's been presented by staff, but a totally separate thought process here on where to go. That's my understanding. Am I fairly correct?
Well, the way I read Component Two was, we don't have a process, we don't have the criteria, we actually haven't decided anything yet, but we won't actually start that process, and NPR-20 has certain advantages. And so, in fact, I think it's to pick up that recommendation that we do go forward at looking at how we might apply that NPR-20 designation and the process by which it would be achieved. So I think it's completely compatible with it. In fact, it should be enabling.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me grab Peter first, and we'll come back to you. Commissioner Swisher? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing, just, a couple follow-up responses. One is, is that we don't have eligibility criteria in our comprehensive plans that describes how one can demonstrate they can comply with this opportunity to change what we've seen in our, over the last twelve years, the ability to change property that's zoned exclusive farm use to some other designation. So the intention, again, with the Component Two, was to list those state criteria in our own comprehensive plan and supplement it with additional local criteria that are even more comprehensive than the state criteria. So that was the intent. As you consider Commissioner Hudson's motion, I want you to also, we need to be, we need to make sure that, recognizing your motion with Component One, you're saying, hey, there's an ability to set up a non-resource process for these six areas. I want to make sure that if the commission finds through the deliberative process that you want to postpone a amendment that lists eligibility criteria for other lands, that we don't inadvertently prevent parties from taking advantage of the non-resource lands process that's in existence today. So you'll need to contemplate, or I would suggest you will contemplate, or staff will have to do it if you go forward with the motion, is to ensure that that door remains open for lands that, through a quasi judicial process, parties want to go forth and demonstrate that they don't have agricultural land. So there's a way of doing that by tweaking Policy 3.11.8. So those are the two points I wanted to make. Hopefully, that was clarifying. If not, I'm happy to try to do it again or turn to my colleagues for additional input. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I'm just wondering, if you were to answer the question, is it compatible, the motion, is that enabling for Component Two of the non-prime resource process, or is it at variance with it? Because my intention was to be enabling, I just want to make sure that it wasn't read as being at variance with.
I didn't see it as a variance. The way I interpret it is that the timing to develop robust eligibility criteria for lands that could be eligible through a separate process should occur through a robust discussion as part of the comprehensive plan update.
No, for inclusion in...
For inclusion in...
The result would be included in, right?
The result would be...
So we get the criteria, we have no criteria in the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
We wouldn't like to develop criteria that we couldn't then include in the comprehensive plan, surely?
I don't, I...
That's what...
Go ahead, please.
What I think our, my confusion is, is whether or not Commissioner Hudson's motion is recommending a revision of the process that we've done to date, or if it's recommending that the policies be enacted, and then if or when we do a comprehensive plan update in several years' times, that's when it is refined, or we look at the entire...
No, no, that, we have no criteria, but we have now, as a Planning Commission, actually agreed to the principle that, in fact, there should be non-prime resource zones, albeit in these six areas. So now, what we need, if indeed that is how the county chooses to go, a process to establish criteria and a process to make the decision and prioritize, and God knows what else you may want to do. I think to do that without the revision that's coming of the comprehensive plan in mind would obviously, potentially at least, be a waste of time. And I think what the hope would be is whatever came out of that in terms of enabling the rezoning of EFU and forest zoned lands would be something which actually would be an improvement ultimately by its wholesale incorporation, perhaps, into the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is probably a bit far out for us to wait for it.
So, yeah, Commissioner Hudson, I, just when I'm on the verge of thinking I'm understanding what you're saying, I fall back and find myself confused. What I'm hearing you say is, I'm going to go back to Component One, that there is a recognition by the Planning Commission that through the policies, as acknowledged in the motion that was approved two days ago, that Deschutes County should, upon the acknowledgement of those policies, we will develop an NPR-10 zone that will be applied exclusively to those six areas. Now, when it comes to actually addressing other lands in Deschutes County that we're not aware of, but we know that there's a lot of lands that don't have agricultural soils, that the timing for listing in Deschutes County's comprehensive plan, what constitutes eligibility criteria, that that should be postponed until the comprehensive plan update is undertaken.
No.
Okay, then I'm not tracking...
It's just that, you know, when you've done it...
Done what?
You go through the standalone process of determining the criteria and the process by which forest and agricultural lands can be rezoned, then we should keep in mind that those criteria and process may inform ultimately an independent revision of the comprehensive plan for the county.
Clarifying question.
I mean, let me just, let's forget the comprehensive plan then, right?
Right.
Clearly, it has an importance that blinds rationale that I hadn't actually realized. It's simply that we had been asked by the county commissioners to establish whether or not there should be, in principle, the ability to have a non-prime resource zone in Deschutes County. And by us voting five to six, that indeed we would have those, potentially those six properties rezonable, rezoned, then we've established the principle. And so my motion then, now I'm taking out the bit about the comprehensive plan, it recommends that the county extends the application of the principle to other parts of the land through a process based upon criteria which we need to develop...
Understood.
And a process to be determined...
Understood.
We don't know how we're going to do it, and we don't know what the criteria are going to be.
Correct.
But maybe we should actually establish those criteria. We're recommending to the Board of County Commissioners that those criteria in that process should be established.
The clarifying question I have is that the Component Two, establishing NPR-20 zone, in our findings, in the amendments, establish or presenting those proposed criteria.
But I mean, but we, you committed that there would be a public process to actually examine those criteria.
That is this process, Commissioner.
No, but, I mean, we actually have not, as a committee, a commission, or actually as the testimony that we've had, examined that process and those criteria in detail.
I would respectfully, Commissioner, say that you have two land use advocacy organizations that have come out vehemently against them for belief that they are not consistent with state law and meeting the state's laundry list of factors that have to be considered when one redesignates EFU zone property to a subsequent designation. So, in fact, and many, many residents have expressed their concerns that if, there's a perspective that by, with Deschutes County listing eligibility criteria that matches the state, which is what we're proposing, albeit probably not perfectly, and supplementing it with local criteria, like being in a fire district and fire protection district, and making sure that any lands that are being contemplated are not in an acknowledged Goal Five inventory, there is a concern that essentially Deschutes County is promoting the spots, the spot zoning opportunities for residents to utilize. Now, we can debate whether that's true or not, certainly you've heard from staff that we don't believe that is the case, because there's only been six or seven, six successful applications since 2007. It's hard for staff to understand if you list the state's criteria and supplement with more restrictive local criteria, that somehow you're opening the floodgates to redesignate property. If anything, all we're doing is clarifying that in Deschutes County, if you want to redesignate agricultural land, or it's never happened, but forest land, this is the eligibility criteria. It's the state's criteria and our local criteria. I think the question for the Planning Commission, and one of the motions that I think Commissioner Swisher raised, is, is this the right process for it? We just heard from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, as one example, that there are some updated wildlife inventories, and if you're going to consider eligibility criteria in 2019, do you want to rely on acknowledged 1992 through 1994 inventories? Or, if you want to do this holistically, maybe you should take into account 2019 information. That's, that was the genesis of the motion that I thought was being considered or contemplated two days ago. Is that helpful?
No, I'm confused.
Okay.
Because I thought the process for taking that on board was indeed the comprehensive plan revision.
You have to, the comprehensive, to, it is a comprehensive plan revision, these are comprehensive plan amendments. So, then, this has been difficult, I think, to translate or convey succinctly to, certainly the Planning Commission and members of the public, is before we can rezone any property, whether we do it legislatively for the six, the six committed residential areas, or whether we want to establish a process where other landowners throughout rural Deschutes County can utilize to redesignate, in this case, farmland, we first have to adopt policies. The policies are the foundation to then develop a zoning code. And the zoning code would be developed through a separate legislative process, both for the six committed residential areas, we'd have to develop an NPR-10 zone, and if the policies were to be adopted as part of Component Two, we would have to work with the Planning Commission, go through a robust public process to be, to introduce what we mean by NPR-10 zone. So we are strictly at the policy construct, and if we're successful with the policies, which we have, no doubt that they'll be challenged based on the testimony from the two land use advocacy groups, but if we're successful in the courts, it gives us the ability... it gives us the ability to not only adopt the zones, but apply the NPR 10 zone to those six areas.
See, the difficulty is though, that we're in, as you said last time, had we known today, what, I mean, we know today, when we started the process, we probably wouldn't have led with those six areas because they are actually not the sort of areas that you could look at and say, ah, okay, so that's what a, a non-prime resource land designation looks like. Because basically they don't fit.
Cool. We're going to stop this back and forth for just a second because I want some of my fellow commissioners to jump in here and either support or oppose this motion and/or seek clarification between staff and/or Commissioner Hudson specifically on what his intent or desire is. Commissioner Swisher, you're up first.
First process point, I don't believe we have a second on the motion yet.
Yeah, we do.
Do we?
Yep.
Thank you, we do. I guess my first question was to Commissioner Hudson, but listening to the back and forth, I'm not sure if my question is who it's to, but Commissioner Hudson or Peter or whoever. It seems to me that we have at least three criteria that we have set in this process. First is that there are six distinct committed to residential areas that were plotted or conveyed, and those were the six we considered. So that was one criteria. A second criteria seemed to me that any other properties, one soils had to be not appropriate for farm or forest. So this is not the, the first six. So that's a criteria, I believe, that was pretty inherent. And a third criteria I heard, or believed I heard, was that it could not interfere with wildlife zones, migration areas, that kind of thing. So at least we had some criteria started in this policy direction. So I guess I'm checking my perception if those are criteria we thought that we were working from. And at this point, my specific question, I was going to ask Commissioner Hudson if his motion or perhaps anyone else answering that, I also, my interest is continuing to look at having it focused more closely towards the current urban growth boundaries or urban reserves of the cities that exist or the plotted unincorporated communities that we have. So in doing so, that was another criteria that I was bringing forward, at least for us to consider in that mix. And that would be a fourth one. And perhaps there's others that we have implicitly agreed on or thought, but at least that was my understanding of where we were. So that's what I was going to ask you about criteria piece and if, if your motion would lead us toward a way or just have a process to develop further criteria.
So Peter, do you want to answer to my motion or can I? Which do you prefer? Do you understand it?
Shall we flip a coin?
If I may, so first of all, NPR 10, I think that there are six unique areas, right?
Right.
So in a way that's open and closed and it's not a criteria and we're going, and we agreed that we're not going to apply to anywhere else. I think you've listed two very good criteria, soil and wildlife. You mentioned urban growth boundary, proximity, which I think is a very good one. I'm not aware that was actually in the list of criteria.
It wasn't. That's something I've entered.
You know, I think, no, no, but what you've just illustrated is exactly what I said, was that we actually need criteria to be developed.
Mm-hmm.
Now Peter said, excuse me, Commissioner, but actually all those criteria have been developed. Now, you know, I think at least you and I together heard something very different.
Okay, Commissioner Kirby.
I just, I, I would like to add something because I think this process has gone on over a fairly long period of time. And we started out with a series of work sessions and open houses. Those criteria, we went through in great detail in the, in that work session. I think what may have been missed, perhaps in the bringing back of reading materials and memos, it would have been good to sort of re-represent the criteria because we did look at them, we, we did poke them a little bit at the beginning of the process. I think what also happened as part of the public testimony was a lot of the feedback was on the general concept. And there was opposition on the general concept. So we didn't receive, while we did receive some testimony on the specific criteria that were presented, by and large, in my view of reading all of this, is that most of it was conceptual in nature. And so I think we've gotten a little bit away from the individual criteria that were put up because these things were included in addition to other pieces around irrigation, things like that. And so I myself don't have all of that in front of me right now because the two inches of testimony here that I have does not include that. I should have brought back my, my previous. So I wondered whether we could put it up on the PowerPoint just to sort of remind ourselves.
Absolutely.
While you're doing that, I mean, I went to every one of those sessions.
Right.
And I never heard a mention of proximity, the urban growth boundary before, right? So I mean, I think what you're saying, it probably isn't the complete discussion. I was trying to pull that in, basically.
We didn't get there. And what I was going to ask on this was, and I liked the concept that you brought about, was is it, is it one of the criteria or is it, are we taking the criteria and then limiting it to particular geographic areas that could be tried?
I think that that would be the final criteria you have, our list of soils, irrigation, wildlife. And then ultimately, if all those exist in favor, then is it within a certain geographic distance? So that's how I envisioned it.
That would be a new criterion, which I think would be perfectly appropriate.
Right.
But we ain't talked about it yet.
And that is a criteria that may, to be term loosely, quell some of the concerns from the public about.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Very important.
Spot development out in the countryside.
Excuse me? You want on?
Yeah.
Speak up.
Um, yeah, the way that I have been conceptualizing this as the conversation has been unfolding is that there were a list of criteria that we've been talking about and that were presented to the public. And through the process of public testimony, we, we became concerned about and interested in the idea of maybe considering the idea of concentrating urbanization or partialization in growth near the urban growth boundary rather than scattered throughout the county because of many reasons, some of which have to do with county services, some of which have to do with, you know, where people feel that it makes sense to have growth happening. And so from the process of planning, rather than the ad hoc objections that we heard, it might make sense to think about that as an eligibility criteria because it would be more planful in some ways. The responsibility to figure out where things should be growing would be more on us or more on the board rather versus according to landowners who, who kind of feel like they want to rezone.
Just anywhere.
Right. And I'm, I, you know, heard that from Central Oregon Land Watch is one of their arguments and from some other people as well. And so I think what happened is that we heard that and we listened really carefully. And then a number of us have now been considering whether it makes sense to have that be another criteria. And then to Commissioner Hudson's point, maybe we should be talking today about if there are any other things that we feel should be added as potential criteria that, that people heard from or were influenced by the public testimony or just thought of. But I, I don't, I'm not hearing that, that we have to not come up with any more eligibility criteria at this point. It's still open, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Biggar's been waiting so long.
Commissioner Biggar, you're on. Then we'll get Mr. Palcic.
No, I, I was just trying to catch your attention for him. And then, then I'll talk.
I paid him five bucks to recognize.
There you go.
So I, I don't know how I'm going to vote on the, the motion, but there is a misconception I would like to correct. Between 2010 and 2017, 48% of the population growth in Deschutes County was an unincorporated area. And I don't know what fraction of that might have been in UGB. I drive this county a lot. It's minute. 41% of the growth was the city of Bend. We are not a rounding error. We're the 800-pound gorilla of growth. So I think Commissioner Hudson implied that, you know, we don't have the growth that the UGB and the cities do. You're right. We've got more than they have. So it's, it is a significant point. Population growth doesn't necessarily equate to housing units, but I know I'm not doubling up a lot of people in my house.
No, that's true.
Mr. Palcic, did you have?
Uh, it's just an observation. At this point, it feels like we're building the airplane as we're flying here. And I'm a little concerned that we don't have a sound foundation where we're going. So anything relative to process is helpful for starters. And I go back, to me, the Bible is the comp plan. And I think it's something that, well, I also think it's something that we're required to actually address when we look at changes such as this. And I, I think that there's enough elements of that comp plan, to me, that make me want to go back there and start from, not necessarily scratch, but start from the comp plan out. I guess what I'm getting at is I think there's enough, enough meat on the bone, enough things that need work, that the comp plan, I'm making a call for it right now, that I, I think it would be worthwhile for this county to revisit that, not just in pieces, right? Just putting it out there as an observation. And I think that we wrestle with that. So you're using, for instance, you lean on stale data, whether it's dealing with wildlife corridors or, or even soil classifications. And there's so much that needs cleaning up that are we building off a faulty foundation as we go forward? And I feel as if we are. And that makes, in my opinion, it makes us more reactionary and not proactive in what we're doing. Slow and steady gets you ready. And if it takes us longer to get it right, trust me, another generation will thank us. Because right now, you know, we, we didn't inherit this place. We're borrowing it from our kids. And we got to remember that. And I think we lose sight of that sometimes. We're going to be judged down the road, how we do this. And I'm concerned, gravely concerned that we're, we're piecemealing this in such a manner that we're blind to what we're looking at. And if you're doing it because of perhaps population trends or what have you, think again. Because I, I think there's more to it. I, so anything relative to process that we can add, that we can hang ornaments on, I'm, I'm all about that. But for me, I'd take it even further back.
I mean, the linkage to the comprehensive plan in the motion was deliberate.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I think the criteria are not there completely. Some are there, some are not relevant. And also, the process is not obvious.
Yeah. And I hate to be, you know, gazing into the crystal ball, so to speak, but I think ironically, that's going to be the death nail of this when it ultimately gets tried. The comp plan's going to come back to haunt you. Or the lack of visitation to the comp plan is going to come back to haunt you. Anyways, just an observation. Us.
Yeah.
Usens.
All righty. Any other commissioners wish to speak on? Again, we do have a motion on the floor. So our options are to vote yes, vote no, postpone indefinitely, which kills it, and then come back to where we started 20, 30 minutes ago, or last Tuesday. What I think I heard Commissioner Palcic say was that maybe we just ought to put the brake on this thing, have staff look at the total plan and come back to us. Is that?
Yeah. But truth be told, I wanted to have the discussion. And so the second actually got that initiated one. And, and secondly, at first take, we're talking process and I'm all there. You know, anything that we're, that would help in that regard, I think would be beneficial. Because we're lost.
Well, you know, I guess I'll ask Commissioner Palcic a question based on this. I mean, what I'm hearing is kind of any major change to the comp plan, you would, you would probably say, we should probably press pause on this, right? This is one example. And so my question, so I, a recognition of that, I, I, and I understand and appreciate that completely. My question to staff is, we're, we've talked about being able to start that process in a couple few years. I mean, just in the work plan that was approved by the board alone, what are kind of some of the major projects that we might be up against, you know, in the next year, that might fall into that category of major changes to the comp plan before a, a full comprehensive plan update?
I think you're going to rub up on it all over the place. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't jump in.
Mr. Swisher.
I was back to the motion that Commissioner Hudson made, and I was going to ask Commissioner Hudson if Commissioner Palcic's comments, did you view those in favor? I mean, did you find that compatible with your motion? So. Because I know you intentionally included words, comprehensive plan, so.
So I guess what, what's killing me in all of this is we see something which needs addressing. It is something which actually should be at the very heart of the comprehensive plan review, because it ain't there now.
Yep.
We have no criteria. The state doesn't need criteria. We don't have a process. The state doesn't have a process. And we're trying to start it off. I'd hate to wait four years. And I think the linkage with the comprehensive plan, which caused such confusion, and I'm, I apologize for that, was simply to try as far as possible to do something which, you know, if we could look forward and see if we could get a work process that could perhaps be included in, be compatible with, in form, or however you want to state it, the comprehensive plan, but that it actually is not an ad hoc process. It's a very serious process with significant resources probably, that we won't open and close next week. I think it'd actually, but actually, I'm, I'm not comfortable waiting four years because delay rarely helps. And I know you weren't suggesting that.
No, not at all.
We heard actually something you may not have picked up, that the comp plan, well, Nick, it was your update.
We discussed the work plan for this next fiscal year with the Board of County Commissioners at the end of June. And we just, we proposed the concept of updating the county's comprehensive plan in its entirety after the census comes out, which is, Peter probably has a better sense of, than I do sometime in late 2020. So it would be.
April 2021.
So it would be in 2021 that we would actually initiate the comprehensive plan update. So it would be a couple of years. And, and backing up from then, we would spend a good six to eight months developing that scope of work and how, hiring consultants and things of that nature, and then really launching a couple year process to update the county's comprehensive plan in its entirety from the goal five resources that, and information that was presented to the, to the planning commission, among a number of other, all, all areas.
I have to be honest with you saying I'm, I'm having flashbacks to floodplain nightmares with this whole option two thing here. So that's kind of where I'm sitting right now. And I don't know how I'm going to vote on this motion. But anyway, that's where I'm at. Commissioner Biggar?
I have a question for staff, if I may, and I, I will apologize in advance for potentially putting you on the spot, but.
Never apologize.
The origin of this issue, I mean, I don't think it was Chris Bell's county hotline anonymous tip, you know, that someone called in the dark of night and said, hey, I really want the planning commissioners to, to work on this. It very easily could have been the B O C C, which if it was, I'm going to take this a lot more seriously than if it was an anonymous tip or somebody left a note under the door. But can you help us give a little history of who's the, who are the parents of this issue? And I think we owe them that respect of.
The parents of this amendment? The parents of this, of this work project?
Issue of the non-prime land.
Oh, well, the non-prime resource land, the terminology was developed by staff in coordination with the board. The interest in this topic is an issue that is driven directly by the Board of County Commissioners, and it's been on the work plan for several years. And we. And we, the board, this planning commission has heard the iterative journey that we've been on for, since the big look bill. Um, so, you know, last fall, um, we, staff in coordination with the board and this planning commission began to develop a policy construct around developing our own policies, our own set of instructions on what it means to be, to have a non-resourced lands designation. Let's get rid of non-prime. That was our terminology to try, to give it a label that applied locally. A non, non-resourced lands does not have any, uh, any state law that dictates what the qualifying eligibility criteria are, how do you deal with carrying capacity? And of course, we've respectfully asked it, as Commissioner Swisher duly noted, uh, 48 hours ago in a letter written just a few years ago, that was not acted upon. So, um, we took the initiative to, to try to meet two audiences. One is, for the longest time, for years, I mean, and I talked to colleagues yesterday, the six re, committed residential areas have been on the county's radar. I had one colleague say, going back to the 1990s, these are the areas that have been platted or conveyed before state-enabling planning legislation was implemented. They have a significant number of vacant lots, as Zex analysis duly noted. So at one point, we thought, this is the, this is a classic example, in many respects, of land that is, in 2019 perspective, is misdesignated. These are platted subdivisions that have multiple ownerships, that have never been farmed or forested, that are 100% committed to residential uses. So we thought, let's address these. This is this opportunity, let's customize policies. And these are policies, and I'm happy to go across the street and print out a, a fresh copy for you, as opposed to squinting on the screen. But these are policies that are from 3.11.9 to 3.11.16. So that was one audience. The second audience was really, how do we want to address the bigger issue of lands that, that don't meet the definition of agriculture and possibly forestry? Um, we know that we've had six in the last 12 years, the largest one being the Department of State Land, Oregon Department of State Lands. Is this the right time to propose eligibility criteria? That, and what I mean by eligibility criteria, again, you've heard this, but it's worth repeating, listing the state's eligibility criteria, so it's in our comprehensive plan, not buried under Goal Three and Oregon administrative rule, that it's in our local comprehensive plan. And in addition to that, introduce some additional local criteria. Now, this commission's identified, maybe, is it important to address wild, new wildlife inventories? Well, that's a good, good question. Should it be catered more towards our urban areas? Well, that's a really good question. Staff is not pre, predisposed to these ideas. It was just, this was the starting point of meeting that second, second suitor, that second circumstance, because we know that demand isn't, isn't going away. Just last year, we had two non-resourced plan, plan amendment zone changes. They were successful, and they are both around the city of Bend. Um, and we have pre-application, we have a pre-application forthcoming for a 240-acre parcel. So they're not going away. And this, this process afforded a conversation with the community, starting in with this planning commission as a citizen involvement arm, is, are these the right criteria? Maybe the timing isn't right. I, um, that's a noteworthy conversation in light of this, you know, uh, support from the board, recently from statements about, maybe we should think about updating the comprehensive plan. Should this be an element of that? That's a, that's a noteworthy perspective. Yeah, yeah.
You've done an excellent job of answering my question. We first had this on our agenda February 19th. We had three open houses. We've had a couple of public meetings. We've had a couple of non-public meetings. The board has said, it's important, we want you to talk about it. It's important, we should talk about it. It's like being nominated at the Supreme Court. It doesn't mean they're gonna tell us how to vote. I'm ready to vote. I think we owe it to the board to take a vote, to move forward, to ignore them. It's disrespectful. Um, and I'm not saying that as a guy that has less than one year left on his term. I'm nervous. We work for the county and in the food chain. They're well above us. I, for one, am not burned out on it. And I'm ready to vote on an amendment, to kick the can, whichever direction the can decides to be kicked.
Commissioner Hudson? I mean, first of all, I think we've gone a long way. I mean, remember, the proposal one went through, has been voted on, has been supported. I think that we are spending a lot of time, and a lot of debating time, and a lot of energy and brain energy on addressing these issues. I think what we're not coming to closure over is whether or not we need to complete the criteria, and whether or not we need to complete a process to be able to actually move forward. And then, you know, the comprehensive plan, I don't hear anybody talking against that. It's just a matter of timing. And so, you know, it's not for us to actually decide those issues. The question is whether we want to move forward or whether we don't want to move forward. I mean, it's a yes or no, I think.
Commissioner Kirby?
So I, I for one, um, I, I'm not prepared. I think I'd probably vote no on the motion, just because I would like to spend, because I think we have received suggested criteria, and I would like to spend some time on the criteria. I think it would be helpful, perhaps, for some additional feedback on, um, a reminder of which of these were our state, and which of these are the, the locally recommended options. And then I'd like us to talk as a group about some of these additional ideas that came to the table, so that we can try to get, sort of make heads of tails of this. We, we may ultimately have a motion that is, um, to reject them, um, to accept them, to do any number of things. But I think it would be helpful, and will be helpful to the board, if we have some additional analysis on these criteria.
That's what we did with the floodplain, though. You know, we extended the remit. All they want to know is yes or no. Is this worth going forward with? And I think, you know, what I was trying to formulate was, yes, it's worth going forward, but it ain't finished.
I, I, I might differ on. I don't, I don't, I would not presuppose that they, the board would not find it helpful to have some feedback on the actual criteria. But staff could probably give us some feedback on that.
Um, I agree with Commissioner Kirby that, I, as I said the other night, um, if you just say no, then you're not really entering in any kind of process, and you're not acknowledging that an issue's been identified, our opinion's been asked about it. And if we have additional opinions, other than just no, um, which we've, some of us have identified, then I think that's just information for them to have. So I think that, I mean, I, I would like to talk about the other options. For me, um, just to be, just to clarify things and get concrete, I would probably vote no, um, unless something drastically changes in our conversation to the amendment, um, unless there were some additional criteria relating to some of the things that I've raised as concerns of mine. And so for me, if we vote right now, and I'm just gonna vote no. But if there are some additional criteria and things like that, I'm open to considering whether it might make sense to try to move forward in some way. Um, and so that's why I want to talk about the additional ideas. Um, and that's just where I'm at with it.
Got it. Commissioners?
I'm not sure where that puts us with the motion that's on the table.
The, the motion proposed that we should actually, if the commissioners want us to, do all the good stuff that you're discussing. But if they don't want us to do it, then it will be just like the floodplain. I mean, we actually spent, it seemed like, months on the floodplain, going down a particular lap rabbit hole, that in the end, they didn't want us to go there. And so, you know, I mean, we're not voting on the amendment, we're voting on the motion. And the motion identifies the need to actually have the criteria, if you like, better developed, and a process for determining that, if the board wants it. And for that to be either includeable in or part of the comprehensive plan process. But at least it gets us guidance from the board with us, without us yet again trying to actually crystal ball gaze what they might or might not appreciate from us.
Commissioner Kirby?
Uh, can I ask staff, uh, the, the board has seen the draft criteria as part of their own work plan, as sort of process, and they requested that it be advanced. Is that not correct?
It's correct that they, they've seen this and they directed us to initiate it, recognizing that the planning commission may amend the proposal through the public process.
For me, I feel like it is our responsibility to address the criteria as part of component two. And if we're not prepared to do that, because we're just seeing it again after a month or so on the screen, and it'd be better to have it in front of us and to take some time to think about that, perhaps we table this part of the discussion. We go back to the letter. We go back to the refinement on the recommendation on option one, and potentially the discussion about the third option on the table. And that maybe we come back. That would be my recommendation.
Any further debate? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna proceed to vote. And so Commissioner Hudson, if you'd like to read the motion again, that'd be great. Just so everyone's clear on what we're voting on here.
So that the rec, recommendation is that the county extend the principle to allow NPR rezoning of other EFU forest zone land throughout the county, based upon criteria to be refined, and a process to be determined, uh, which encompasses all of that, if they want us to do it, uh, suitable for inclusion in the complete, the comprehensive plan revision process.
Okay, there you have it. Those in favor of the motion, which has been properly moved and seconded, please raise the right hand if you are in favor. That's a yes.
Find it.
That's four opposed, same sign. Let the record show that the motion passes. Four in favor, that would be Palcic, Beager, Swisher, and Hudson. Three opposed, that would be Kirby, Crawford, and Kierras.
Mr. Chairman?
This, uh, motion has passed. Mr. Swisher?
I believe that, uh, we should start, and I'm happy to make it in the form of a motion at some point, uh, setting up our process to, uh, further discuss our criteria and establish criteria ideas, so that we just continue the work. But in the meantime, with this motion, we're double-checking with the commissioners. Do they want us to do that or not, you know? So at that moment, before we do that work, we probably should hear that answer. But ultimately, I think we should assume that they're gonna say yes. That's my point of view. And start to set times and processes, including more time tonight, if needed, to start down this road of establishing criteria.
That's a good idea.
Is that a proposal?
Well, that is a proposal, but it's not a motion. It's just a, it's for people to comment on and staff.
You do or you don't?
I do.
Okay, in that case, I withdraw my second amendment. Maybe I could third it.
Yeah. You okay with putting that in a motion, Mr. Swisher?
Um, let me see if I can be more succinct. I move that we, um, I move that we set timelines and process for continued work on this topic of developing criteria that would lead towards, uh, the adoption of this policy, should the county commission, um, affirm they want us to continue.
Is there a second?
I thought there was an additional part to it. And then we get to keep talking about it tonight.
We could keep talking about it tonight. I, I'm fine with that. I think the motion would allow us to do that tonight if we.
I second that.
Second, correct? Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that, um, we set a timeline for continued work on this topic, developing criterion policy, should the county commissioners wish us to do so. Is that fairly close?
That's pretty close. Probably better than I could repeat it.
Okay, is there any, any discussion on that motion?
I think it's a good proposal.
Okay, Commissioner Kirby?
I'll just add, and because I'm going to abstain on this, and you do not love abstentions without discussion, I will say that I think we kick the can down the road a month or six weeks, and the board will say in a very polite way, asked and answered, and this will come back for us to keep discussing it. Um, and we could have just continued that process and presented information to him. I would say that respectfully, but I, I'm, I'm a little frustrated with how this just happened.
Um, the reason why I'm seconding it is because, um, I, we have a lot of stuff on our plate this summer, and we have a lot of, um, things on the agenda. And we might be adding another meeting in August, as we've discussed earlier. And so I would like to just get going on this tonight, if possible, and not have too much further discussion. Um, but get right into talking about the criteria, so that if, if it is gonna be that, um, we end up providing the criteria, at least we have them ready. Um, and it wouldn't require a whole other meeting, which, like, Commissioner Kirby just said it, that may be, you know, quite a ways in the future.
Mr. Chair? Bishop Palcic?
Doesn't the motion require a green light from?
Yes.
The B O C C?
That was not my intent. My intent was that while we're continuing to work on this criteria, we're checking with the county commissioners. And the county commissioners say no, then we stop our work. But in the meantime, soon as we vote, I assume we're gonna keep talking about criteria tonight.
I, I wasn't trying to gum it up. I just wanted to make sure we didn't overstep on that. That's.
I, I was under the impression when I heard the motion, and it certainly will do what the maker of the motion wants, but that we would not proceed into criteria or, um, policy and process until we got the go-ahead from them. Um, I, I personally am opposed to spinning our tires in mud. And if we're going to talk about criteria and policy, then I'd like to get something there in front of me that I can read, because I do have it at home probably, but it's buried about that deep, back from staff. So I would be opposed to continuing this discussion this evening. That's where I would be. But you guys are the commissioners, you make the decisions.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, just being really pragmatic, I'm not envisioning four hours tonight. We got about 20 minutes usually, we end up about eight o'clock. We talked about urban growth boundary, whether that's a good idea or not. Seemed to me, we could have 15 minutes worth of conversation on a couple of these criteria, and it might inform us all. And then we say, hey, county commissioners, I go ahead. We start putting it on our agenda for the next meetings. I mean, that's just how I viewed it.
Commissioner Hudson?
Except I'd like to get your letter moving. We have a motion that was tabled about writing to the state.
Right.
I think what we can say now to the state is that we actually are beginning a process, we believe, and that in fact, uh, we should, we would ask them to provide rulemaking, or however we would choose to do it.
Yeah, I think that's a positive addition, although that's not necessarily germane to
Okay.
This moment.
So we currently have a motion on the floor that says that, um, geez, what do I want to say here? Um, that, that we continue working on criteria and process for option two. Is that fairly clear, Commissioner Swisher? Or is that kind of?
It is, but as we work on that, we're asking the county commissioners whether that we should continue or not, so we don't waste more than 20 minutes tonight. That's an explanation. Right.
All right, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, shall proceed to vote. All in favor of that motion, uh, which I just tried to put in words, please raise the right hand. Opposed? Let the motion, uh, the record show that the motion passes five in favor, that being Palcic, Beager, Swisher, uh, Hudson, and Kierras. One abstain, which would be Kirby. One no vote, Crawford. Okay, now I would like to take. One no vote, Crawford. Okay, now I would like to take from the table the motion that we write a letter to the appropriate person, people, personnel, whoever, and copy that to other county staff about developing process, et cetera, for this topic. Is that somewhat clear? Mr. Swisher, you made the motion.
I did, and my motion was that we ask the Commissioners if they would like to write a joint letter with the Planning Commission, D.C., to promulgate rules in this area for clarity, remind them that we had already wrote that two years ago. And in the discussion of that motion, we also had talked about staff using their professional connections to see if any other counties perhaps might have interest in supporting that context by writing letters. So in doing so, I also think that this motion that is back onto the table is very concurrent with what we just did, because we can ask the County Commissioners together. The Planning Commission is interested in writing a letter jointly with you, and further, do you want to do that, and do you want them to continue to work on criteria? I mean, that's two natural things to ask them together.
Bishop Palasek.
We should just change the dates on the last letter that we sent. That's what it feels like.
That would work perfectly.
I'm joking when I say that, but I mean it just, it's, I feel like I've heard all this before, this part.
Any further discussion?
I'll ask next this time. I've pecked on Peter enough. There's 35 other counties in the state of Oregon. Any of the other 35 stuck their head out of the hole to take on this type of an issue, and what are the results been? Are we leading the pack again?
At least Crook County and Lane, well, Lane County has marginal lands, along with Clackamas County, they have marginal lands. Yeah, there are at least a couple of other counties that have adopted non-resourced lands programs.
How, are they tied up in court? Did they green light? What's, how would you compare their status?
No, they're adopted, they're acknowledged, and they're applied. Jackson County has a program, a couple of other counties have programs, and they're in various iterations. For example, Crook County adopted theirs with a, I'm going to call it a non-resourced 20, but I'm not sure if that's exactly what it's called. And it's just, so I haven't checked with them to see how many applications they've received to actually do that, so I'm not sure about that. Jackson County did theirs in the early, in the mid-2000s. It was appealed to Luba, it was remanded, they redid it, re-adopted. And I don't think it's been implemented widely throughout the county, very, very minimally. They then participated in the Southern Oregon Regional Pilot Project to, again, look at a non-resourced lands process, began to look at that, applying that countywide, and then their Community Development Director left a couple of years ago, and I think the program, that project, has stalled. So there's a couple, there's a couple that have been adopted and acknowledged, but I can tell you there's significant interest by counties across the state to have the state of Oregon create rules. A lot of counties aren't even going to, going to take a chance to create the rules unless there's a rulebook, or I should say, adopt criteria into their own plans unless they know, they have some level of predictability. We're generally the ones out there taking more risk than others are, trying to define the program where the program is not defined.
So Crook County has less than 23,000 people, and it, Deschutes County's closing in on 200,000.
Yeah.
Jackson's 200,000.
And the state probably just doesn't look at them as significant enough, and we may have a completely different reaction.
Oh, I think the state's involvement in local county issues, they probably evaluate to determine if it rises to the level of statewide significance, each proposal, and they may not have evaluated theirs to rise to the level of statewide significance, where they sure will us.
Jackson County is larger.
They're larger. And Jackson County and the state of Oregon have been working very closely now for eight or nine years on the pilot project and then implementation following that. So there's been significant interest by the state with Jackson County.
I worked for a guy that always said, you can always be sued. Just worry about losing.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion on that motion?
The motion is that we ask the Board of County Commissioners if they'd like to co-write a letter with the Planning Commission, submit it to the appropriate people, i.e. copy the one we did two years ago, according to Commissioner Palasek, redate it, re-sign it.
Change the names.
Yeah, change the names.
To protect the innocent.
Yes, it was. All in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion show, all opposed. Okay, let the record show that the motion passes. Five in favor, Palasek, Beager, Swisher, Hudson, and Kierras. Two abstain, Crawford, Kirby. No, no votes. Okay, we now have nine minutes to develop criteria.
Well, eight.
That, I was being nasty. Sorry. Commissioner Kirby.
I did just want to bring up that we did have the option number three that was raised on the table, and we also have the, the Option One that required some clarification about the deletion of Policy 3.11.15, if that was going to be incorporated. I think those things could be also discussed. I don't think we can achieve those and also start going through the criteria. I would, I would recommend, I did abstain to that, I will take part in a discussion, of course. I myself sort of agreed with you that I'd like to see it on paper in front of me. I'd like to digest it again, because it hasn't been discussed for a bit in great detail, and bring it back for discussion at a later date.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest we get it as a table of criteria, rather than just a copy of that document?
It's up to staff if they could prepare that.
I can give you both.
That'd be fine.
And perhaps in that table, we could have the, whether it's local or whether it's state, just to...
The current proposal, or?
Yes, the current proposal, which items were taken from...
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, what do you want to do?
Perhaps we should clarify the motion we already made, just in terms of number one, and whether that question Peter asked, what was the intent? And I think you were the maker of the motion, so what was your intent?
I, it was my intent to delete Policy 3.11.15, as it's irrelevant. So my, I would make a, if you'd like to entertain a new motion, I would make a new motion if we need one, rather than a clarification of the intent. I'd be happy to move a new motion, but...
Well, we had it.
So Peter gave us some discussion this evening about removing that particular language. Is that correct?
In the staff memorandum, just for context again, in the deliber, in the memorandum preparing the Planning Commission for deliberation, staff, what we're calling Component One, suggested we remove Policy 3.11.15 for reasons that have been explained. And it just wasn't clear if Tuesday's motion included that amendment or not.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swisher.
Commissioner Kirby, Vice Chair Kirby, made that motion, and we heard her intent. I seconded that motion, and that was my understanding and my intent. Now, if all of you felt differently or had different intent, then it might require another vote. If you didn't, I think we just clarified the motion.
Your intent was to have that.
Correct.
And that's, that's what I was doing also.
And that was my intent, right.
Anyone else understand? Okay, so I think we're fine on that then. Commissioner Kirby.
I'm good. And Commissioner Beager, did you understand that as well?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
So that only took a minute. We got six left.
So where do you want to go, ladies and gentlemen? You want to talk about criteria? You want to get something?
So...
I would prefer to get something on paper.
Right.
Before we start giving this serious debate. I think we're probably looking at our first biggest meeting for this to occur, because I think our next meeting is going to be in Terrebonne. I think we're going to be totally into the transportation thing. And I'd probably rather be sitting at this desk to discuss this material rather than in Terrebonne, but that's my opinion.
Great. So, Mr. Chair, that intent of the motion to have us continue to discuss was not only the actual criteria, but the process?
Correct.
So the process, I think we can accomplish. We just heard your opinion about when the meeting was and the time. Another piece that I would add to the chart is that, the chart from your original intent of state and the local criteria, but I think a couple of different ideas did come up. One was close to urban areas. I mean, perhaps you can go through the discussions from your own memory or notes or minutes and say, there's a third category down here, and things that were brought up during our deliberations that might have been an idea. So there was one. I think there was another, too. I don't recall right now off the top of my head, but if, when you prepare your, your grid, that if those could be sort of at the bottom of the list down here, other ideas that have come up, that might be worthwhile looking at.
Commissioner Kirby.
I'd like a, just clarification from Nick or Peter, etc. I think it's to Nick, really. Since we are already going to have to delete this until August 8th, might we, before we start and then check in as a progress check, could you check in your next business meeting with the Board of County Commissioners to determine whether that was in fact their intent to have us evaluate and amend or clarify and put forward a recommendation on the criteria so that we just go ahead and have that, and then in our next meeting, we can actually move forward as I thought we were going to move forward into this process?
Yes, Commissioner Kirby, because that is exactly the threshold question I was just going to ask, is that I understand the motion that passed tonight, is that we check in with the Board before going forward. But then my follow-up question was, when do we check in with the Board before the Planning Commission goes forward? Is it before you begin to identify some additional potential criteria, or do you want to check in with the Board with, we would also like to explore these additional criteria and have an additional process, and then take that as a package to the Board with the recommendation? So that's exactly my question of, when do we check in with the Board? Is that...
I heard something totally different. Yeah, I mean, I...
We're trying to understand.
Would you allow me to, I mean...
I would love to hear Peter's...
I mean, what I heard is essentially the motion for Component Two is, this issue needs to be revisited at the time of the comprehensive plan with a detailed schedule and process. And so that, that's what I, that was my understanding of, of the motion, is that you, the timing was, you wanted more time to look at the eligibility criteria, and that the time to do that was, the language that was used was through the comprehensive plan revision, which I assume is synonymous with the comprehensive plan update. And so by making that motion, you have effectively taken out Component Two from this Papa, and that this Planning Commission can begin debating the other criteria, but the time to reinsert that will be through a separate post-acknowledgement plan amendment.
See, I don't think that's been decided, because my understanding is exactly the opposite.
That's why I was, I was perplexed. I'm not disagreeing with you, Commissioner Hudson, I'm just conveying what my notes were, so.
Yeah, but, okay, so then, as the motion was originally mine, and my notes are before me here, it actually was that in fact, it wasn't going to be delayed until the comprehensive plan process, but it was suitable for inclusion in the comprehensive plan revision, the work output.
I don't know what, the comprehensive plan revision? Commissioner Hudson?
Can you just read it again?
Does not, I don't understand what that means.
I think I'm going to give up for the line. I'm kidding.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chair, I was part of that motion-making, and Peter, your understanding of that, I don't think I had any intent to wait until comprehensive plan to do all this work. The plan was, do we spend the next 10 minutes tonight and start talking about process and time to get the criteria down, and then do we schedule some further meetings, get it on our agenda to keep working on this, on this very proposal?
You're decoupling.
On this very proposal.
But ask the Board as soon as possible.
But ask the Board as soon as possible, because if the Board turns around and says, oh, no, never mind, we don't want to go down that trail. So my understanding and intent was, you'd create that little matrix here and be ready for us to continue our work right on down the line here, and the only stopgap would be if the Board said, nope. But in the meantime, we just continue our work.
That was my understanding also, as Chair.
Right.
And I did vote against that motion. The reason was, I didn't want to waste time developing, developing process and criteria if the Board was saying, no, we don't want to go down that route. That's why I voted no.
Right.
My intent was not to postpone this until two years from now when we do the comprehensive plan. Commissioner Kirby.
Process question. So, and I think this is what Peter was getting at, we've decided to take all of these components separately, so that we could march through them in a reasonable format and not have, you know, sort of things sway our discussion and just sort of be more orderly with this. Are we, this is a, this is a, this is a work plan process, are we decoupling this from that process, and, or are we holding on making our final decisions on this for additional clarification from the Board, to which we'll bring back and then be able to make a decision on this final piece, so that we can prepare a package that goes to the Board? Or are we pulling this out, saying we are deferring on this piece, we're moving the rest of the recommendations forward, and you'll have to instruct us to come back to this as a completely separate process? Is that, is that fair, or, that's my question, anyway. I don't know if that's what Peter was getting at, but I, that's certainly my question about how we close this process down and be able to refer it to the Board with our recommendations.
I'd like to respond to your question from my understanding. My understanding is, we've made a decision on a piece of that, and we can forward that to the County Commissioners at any point. The second part, we're not done deliberating about the second chunk here. And we just did a whole discussion trying to say, how are we going to grapple with this, and what's the process going to be? We said, well, let's double-check with the County Commissioners, and in the meantime, let's get this stuff back in front of us and forward their criteria, and let's start thinking, when are we going to do it again, in terms of what meetings and time? And so it wouldn't be decoupling it from the process at all, we're just continuing this process.
Okay, so we are not making a decision on this piece without further clarification from the Board? Component Two.
That...
That was your intent?
That was my intent.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Presumably, the Board will receive our minutes, and it will be updated appropriately, though, because we're not actually deferring application of the principle, we're just asking how the Board believes we should work the process. Otherwise, we're going to make it ourselves, and we'll be in a floodplain.
Exactly.
And that's what Nick's going to check in with the Board about.
To the next question, when should we check?
ASAP.
Okay.
Soon as possible.
Yeah, ASAP.
Which will probably be...
Now, I haven't heard from other Commissioners. I've been hogging the mic here a little bit for my...
I think it's... One thing to respect, the wishes of the B O C C. It's another one to like it. It's another one to wish it wouldn't go away, but I can't think of a better group than this group. We don't have our hand on the throttle. I think our hand leans closer to the brake. We're going to do it right, and we're going to leave a legacy that's going to take that Terrebonne 2040 plan and make that thing look like a dinosaur, so. It won't be fun, but I think it'll be done right. Just when, we'll have a contest against the floodplain.
Bishop Palasek, you're just chomping at the bits.
Yeah, I don't know how to follow that up, and we have more fun over there in Binders waiting for us, and so, floodplain, too. And that, that, that's a good illustration of trying to get it right, if we in haste go about this. And, you know, that's the other thing, too, when we look at this, really talking about, I mean, when you boil it all down, you're talking about entitlements, land entitlements. I mean, yar. You know, I want to convert my acreage into a zoo, or whatever. I mean, it's, you're, you're actually, that's what, that's what this is all about, really. And I... And I think getting the process right, if we're going to do it, is so important. So an extra step wouldn't hurt. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at, we're going to be revisiting this over and over.
Commissioners? Commissioner Kirby?
So, sounds like we'll do that. On option three, I will just put out there a question about whether folks want to discuss that, at least in concept. It sounds like we'll have another meeting about NPR. Should we get some discussion on the table about that and then be able to bring back that during the same meeting? Because that was on the list of things that we should be looking at and considering. Or should we just table it?
I will speak to that for just a moment. So it seemed to me that those people that were expressing concerns about option three were close to urban growth boundary. And I think Commissioner Hudson's motion, or maybe criteria, Commissioner Swisher, about being close to the urban growth boundary would solve those option three people. But that's my thoughts.
I'll just respond by, I think if we looked at this list, I think that some of those properties were partially irrigated, and so I'm not sure if the criteria actually would address that. And so if that's still a good criteria to be considering as part of NPR 20 or whatever the acreage is on that, I think that might still be separate. And so, but potentially since we're going to bring back criteria, maybe we should table that until then as well, rather than talking about it in concept.
Okay, Commissioners, where do you want to go? I'm ready to go for a beer.
Home, he said.
Okay, I don't really see any people who want to speak loudly, so we'll go to planning commission staff comments. So we'll go with staff first. Nick?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just ask, given the conversation earlier this evening with Terrebonne and the public hearing on the 25th, as you heard me clearly try to preserve the integrity of the planning commission's review process with the public, my question is, do you, do you want to go ahead and have a placeholder, for example, for an extra meeting as our commissioner suggested? And I heard possibly as well, for example, on August 1st? So a week after the 25th? Would you like to just go ahead and if you're not prepared to move forward on the 25th, to deliberate on the 8th? I'm at your pleasure, whatever you would like to do. I want you to have the time that you need to listen to and consider the public comments, given the magnitude of this investment and impacts into Chutes County. So we can either have a placeholder for the 1st, or, which is the second night of the 100th Deschutes County Fair? And I don't know who the concert venue is that night? Or do we, you know? Would you like to continue with the next week on the 8th when you have two other public hearings?
I didn't hear that the county commissioners were actually pushing for that speed.
Right.
You heard that they were?
Were not.
Okay.
No, quite the contrary. I mean, actually, well, but I mean, the situation is, I think that, you know, any superorganization tries to fix it again when they've got everybody around the table. I think we were asked to do some crystal ball gazing, which is almost impossible. I think the chairman, who actually has been most involved in the process, probably is best able to judge whether or not we're going to get much in the way of public testimony. My sense is that we are, because I got the feeling that at least there were some groups, maybe small now, smaller, that were not satisfied. And I think if we need to deliberate, we should, surely should deliberate.
Commissioner Kirby?
I'll just add to that. I agree, and just looking at the calendar, based on what was proposed about being able to get that potential date on the 6th. If we did have our meeting on the 25th and then we decided to deliberate on the 1st, we're still not going to have the public noticing necessary to make that meeting on the 6th work, anyway. So I would suggest not having the meeting on the 1st and being able to incorporate that into the 8th. But that's partly selfishly because I may very well be out of town on the 1st, and I would like to be part of that deliberation. But again, I will be professional, as we've talked about. And if there's a quorum of people that would like to meet on the 1st and can deliberate on the 1st, I will defer.
I also cannot meet on the 1st.
Okay.
Pardon?
Oh, I just said, there you go. I was going to add that it's hard for me to make meetings at short notice because I have to reschedule clients who are normally coming in on that evening. So it's helpful for me to know in advance.
Let's just plan on it. Agenda item on the 8th and...
Yeah. Perfect.
If we need to schedule an additional meeting, I was thinking perhaps the week after on a Thursday night, as opposed to the 1st.
I could do the 15th.
Go for a special meeting on the 15th?
I think I can do that. It may be something, I would like to be able to consult, you know, if we did an email just to see if we could get that... You can't? I can make it, yes.
Let's just, my sense is that we're going to, we're going to get some probably negative comments living in that community. But I think our deliberations will probably be, this is my opinion, and I'm positively looking at this, they're going to be, our deliberations will be fairly short. That's where I'm at. I could be all wrong, but that's kind of what I'm thinking. So let's just plan on it as an agenda item on the 8th, if staff's okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
You could ask Nick to ask the county commissioners when he asks the other two things, whether they really want this done quickly.
I'm happy to.
Okay, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, Nick?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I would offer one comment. I feel like it'll be helpful at the conclusion of the non-resourced lands process to have a debrief with staff. I can't help but feel like staff let you down on this one in terms of not preparing you for the two components. But I think it'd be helpful to debrief it. It's so complicated. And I, you know, obviously there was a little bit of frustration, I think, on the staff level tonight, just as we, just tracking the conversation and completely, and I offer my apologies to Commissioner Hudson for not tracking the motion. These are, these are two distinct projects, and I think there's a lot that I've learned that, you know, you didn't have the policies in front of you. I think we can do better. And I just would like to have that conversation constructively. I mean, just to, you know, there's a lot of testimony, you had a big binder. You weren't looking, thinking of the policies. So something to think about for us to improve over time. Not, I don't, I don't want to go backwards where the meeting's coming to a close, but something I think that warrants a discussion, maybe even, you know, maybe after our Lupa and the floodplain, just how well staff is preparing you for these substantive hearings. I think it would be very beneficial because we want to make sure we're giving you the information and articulating it and putting it in writing and summarizing testimony in ways that allow you to distill it effectively. So something to think about because I take it very seriously.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Hudson?
I mean, you know, first of all, please don't beat yourself up. An attempt to probably achieve something which wasn't closure because I sensed there were more criteria being added in than there were. So I think you have no reason for that. I think, as I said last time, I do think you did a very, very good job on a very, very evolving wicket, basically, as we went through. But I think in any case, we should always have a debrief.
Yeah.
When we go through these things.
I agree.
Because it's not just for staff to us, but it's actually us to us as well. Because I think, you know, I sense there's much frustration here as I did here, and I don't know, maybe there. But you look happy with each other. You think we're all jerks.
Commissioner Kirby?
Well, I will concur with that, but I also, I want to commend the staff for bringing us along over a complex process. You know, the work session, spending as much time as we needed on that, asking questions, the open houses and getting out to the communities, the site visits so that we could see what we were talking about. I feel like you took very good care of us. I think this, this one piece, maybe coming back before this meeting, bringing this information back together would be my only critique here. But I really do appreciate how much hard work you both and other team members probably put into this and the care that you took to make sure that we were understanding the issues. So, thank you.
Nick, comments?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Palasick, good to see you again this evening. Any comments?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I will, I'll make them very short. No, I want to make up for a couple of days ago, no. Sorry for my absence, but I am thrilled as I watched the video and I watched all of it and watched people voting with wrong hands and all that fun stuff. I, I was thrilled that you guys took action and didn't wait. You had a quorum and you acted on it. And I, Zach, I appreciate you pointing out that you heard from Nick. And, yeah, I did share with Nick. You know, I don't want to stop the world from spinning, as I mentioned to Nick, you know, something like that. So I was happy about that for certain. And I thought, got to get you closer to the microphones, a couple of you, but otherwise I thought you did great, you know, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
We should always keep that in mind. Commissioner Beager?
So anytime you doubt the sanity of your meeting, just go back a couple of weeks and watch the presidential debates. Chair Crawford, you run a great meeting. You keep us under control. We don't have food fights. We don't, we don't interrupt each other. We show the greatest respect to each other, even when we're thinking thoughts that may not be overly respectful. And we are to be commended, and staff, beat somebody else up. You're beating yourself up, you're beating up the wrong guy. You, you know, move on. That's it.
Mr. Swisher?
Again, I think staff has done a remarkably good job, and I appreciate the work that you guys have done on this. My comment is a description I heard some time ago about the legislative process and the end product of good legislation being compared to making sausage. The end product, the sausage tastes very good, but if you watch it being made and go through it, it's a little distasteful occasionally. So ultimately, I think for our good debates and our discussions and being respectful with each other, as Commissioner Beager said, but also not being afraid to disagree or clarify or doing that, I think that's extremely positive. And again, I appreciate the body doing that. I mean, we dove in it, and I don't think anyone held back on their opinion, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Kirby?
I said what I want to say, thank you.
Commissioner Kieris?
I was just going to say, I, this was the first, I think the first voting where I got to disagree with people, and it was just a really positive experience. I know that might sound kind of silly, but I really respect all of you very much, and so it's kind of a pleasure to disagree with people that I respect so highly, if that, if that makes any sense.
I'm here anytime you want to. Just let me know.
But it just, it was, it felt very positive and very like, you know, there was room for that to happen, so that's my debrief.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudson?
The only way you could top that is that I didn't vote against you, but I did punch you in the nose, but I do actually respect you and I feel great about it.
Very good. I would like to just bring up one thing about this particular document we received, and there was a comment this evening about that this started in 2018. That's kind of incorrect. It actually started in 2017, and it was totally citizen-driven. I mean, it was no state staff, no county staff, nobody, just citizens that got together and said, we need to solve a problem in Terrebonne. And then got a committee going, contacted legislatures, resulted in some money, and then it took off in 2018.
A load of money, actually.
Yeah, 20 million, so it was a lot of money. So it really gave me pleasure, having been, from the get-go on this thing, to work on it. And that citizen involvement is important, that citizens can get things done if they come together and work at it. So I think that's critical.
Yes.
So we'll see you in Terrebonne in two weeks, I guess. Meeting adjourned.
At the school.
At the school.